Good evening and welcome, and thank you everyone for being with us tonight. I will call this meeting of Montgomery County School Board to order at 7:00 on March 3rd, 2020. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's school board representative is Kushi from Christiansburg High School, and she will read our mission, vision, and core value statements.
We would like to welcome all our guests to our school board meeting tonight. Here in Montgomery County Schools, our mission is that every student will graduate career and college ready and become a productive, responsible citizen. Our vision is to inspire learning by providing a nurturing environment, positive relationships, high expectations, and continuous growth. Here in Montgomery County Schools, our values for everyone include physical safety, emotional well-being, mutual trust and respect, open communication, accountability, engagement, and lifelong learning and cultural diversity. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, Kushi, for being with us tonight. The next item will be approving our, adopting our agenda as presented. May I have a motion?
Sumo.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we have an agenda. Next item will be the electronic meeting participation. Since Mr. Chabaka is not here, may I have a motion to approve his participation in the meeting electronically as he is out of town?
Sumo.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve that. As a reminder, Mr. Chabaka will only be able to hear if we speak to the microphone. So make sure we all use our microphones. The next item is our superintendent's announcements. Dr. Meyer?
All right, thank you, Ms. Carron, and I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. Is this on? Is this working? Yes, no, can't hear? Can you hear it now?
Nope.
Okay. Got it right. Thank you. So I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. I especially like to welcome the Boy Scout Troop 141 of Christiansburg is in the audience tonight. They're attending a public meeting as part of their communications and citizenship in the community merit badges. So I'd like to welcome you guys here. Also, just wanted to let everyone, the board, know that the elections went well in our schools today. We had six schools that were polling places, and that was Auburn High School, Christiansburg Middle, Blacksburg Middle, Gilbert Lincoln's, Mark Beeks, and Falling Branch. And we had real organized for our folks, and we did not hear any complaints today. So I just wanted to update you guys on that. Yep, absolutely. I wanted to update you on the county administrator's proposed budget last night, which included an additional $1.55 million for our schools. And if approved by the board supervisors, this will allow us to meet our budget priorities for next year. It's about $200,000 less than what we had asked for, but we're, we're working to see how we can make that something we can work with. So we're excited about that. Strategic planning team will meet as a whole group again on March 18th. The action teams will present their plans for consideration. This is the final step before presenting the plans to the school board. Our teams have put a lot of time and work to help guide the future of MCPS. So we've had about 160 folks that have been working on these teams, and we appreciate the, the time from teachers, parents, students, community members in this process. A special announcement, on March 18th at 10:45 a.m., Senator Kane will be visiting our CTE classrooms at Blacksburg High School. So if anyone can make it, it is the exact same day as strategic planning.
That's a bummer.
And so it's only for about an hour or so, so I'm gonna step out during that time, and we, I know, Gune and Penny, we need to sort of figure out what we can or can't do, and see how we can-
Just tell him he needs to come and see us.
I know.
Yeah.
They stop by at where we are.
Well, I asked if they would give us a different date, and it was very much a firm no.
It's not a matter of different date. Come see us.
That's right.
See the work that we're doing with our planning.
He can come.
So, um, so we'll, I'll give you more information about that later. That's, that's very exciting. And what prompted that was our legislative breakfast a few months ago. Even though legislators could not show up, it was such a good presentation that the representatives went back and told them how, how good of a job we're doing.
His aide was.
His aide was, yes. And so, you know, the very instant drone program, we're the first, we're the first division in Virginia to have a drone program in Virginia, you know, and so we're very excited about that, and they are as well. Something else, update you on, I emailed the director of the governor's school to answer some questions you all asked about last meeting. They're, they're looking at proposing a tuition increase of $200 per student. With 20 students, that's about $4,000. They're not looking at any, anything in terms of capital at this time. And so, but they haven't, they still have not finalized anything. If when they do, I'll bring it back to you. Okay? In athletic action, region basketball, last Friday, East Montgomery Girls played Auburn Girls, and East Montgomery was number one seed, and Auburn was number eight seed, and Auburn ended up winning. And it was one heck of a girls' basketball game. It was, it was a lot of fun, fun to watch. This past weekend also, or, excuse me, last weekend, went to the state wrestling championships in Salem, and that was a lot of fun. And of course, you know, everyone knows the history of Christiansburg High School wrestling, 17 state champions, straight, state championships. Last year they were runner-up, and this year they were runner-up again. And, you know, for this community, that's disappointing, but it's really, really, really good. I mean, I'm telling you. It's just a, a great day to, to watch our athletes in action. I was able to attend the Student Research Symposium at Blacksburg High School. I actually, I sent out on, on social media some of their projects, really incredible, the, the projects that our students are producing. Also, this past Saturday, we had our job fair. We, we interviewed close to 250 candidates for jobs in Montgomery County. And we've got a lot of people, a lot that want to come and work in Montgomery County. A lot of the candidates were coming from other school divisions that, in this area, that want to come to us. And I think that says a lot about our, our schools here. And I know the community group also hosted a, a dinner following that, and that was well-attended, and I appreciate Ms. Franklin and, and the community group for hosting that as well.
And her yummy desserts.
There's, if Ms. Franklin is cooking, the desserts are yummy, I promise you. Yes, okay?
Thank you, Dr. Meyer. Next item in our agenda is the public address at this time, and at each our regularly scheduled meeting, school board sets aside up to 30 minutes for residents, students, and employees to address the board about issues pertaining to public education in Montgomery County. You may sign up to speak on the Chromebook at the back of the room and/or the Chromebook at the front of the room, and you can still sign up during the public address in session. Each speaker is allowed a three minutes to speak. The screen, tractor room, and on the laptop will indicate that speaker has 30 seconds remaining and when the three minutes has passed. As a reminder, the board does not respond to speakers during public address. I have already signed up sheets, and I will go and start reading first two names. Please come forward when you hear your name. Come forward, state your name and address, and then you have three minutes. So first two individuals, and you can come forward and sit closer to the public address spot if you like. The first two names are, and I hope I am spelling and saying out loud right, but first is Marygold Hibbert, and the other, second one is Anna Vigian. I, I hope I'm not butchering it so much.
My name is Marygold Hibbert, and I live at 507 Lucas Drive in Blacksburg. So when we think of tickets, we often think of rides, excuse me, rides at the fair or a chance to win something. However, when I volunteered recently at Harding Avenue Elementary School's lunch recycling program, I remembered a bubble gum pink ticket that brought me great shame and embarrassment. When I was in elementary school, my siblings and I, there were eight children, we qualified for reduced lunch. So each morning, the dreaded time arrived when my teacher gave me a pink ticket, in sharp contrast to my classmates' white tickets. My ticket was a keen reminder of the stress of living in a family that struggled financially. I thought that technology had eliminated this glaring inequality until I had to gently explain to my third-grade son that he receives his lunch for free and therefore could not add the bags of chips and ZZ bars to his tray that the lunchroom manager informed me that he had been trying to get. With the death of my husband three years ago and my return to school, I am very grateful for the free lunch program. I have three children, middle, high, and elementary, and it is very comforting, and frankly, it makes my life easier to know that they come to school and they get a great lunch. However, with the introduction of competitive snacks, this has returned us to my 1980s childhood, and has made children that cannot afford the extras experience the burden of being different, when the desire to be like everyone else is so very critical at this age. Dr. Meyer and the board, please eliminate the practice of selling competitive snacks to our children. Thank you.
Thank you. After Anna will be Susan Miller.
Hi, my name is Anna Vigian, and I live at 4478 Preston Forest Drive in Blacksburg. And I'm the parent of an elementary school student at MCPS. I'm here today to ask that you allocate funding to increase the number of gifted staff at MCPS. I understand that MCPS cut 2.5 gifted staff during the recession many years ago, along with other positions. However, while other positions have subsequently been restored, the gifted positions have not. I understand that year after year, the Gifted Advisory Committee has recommended that two gifted positions be reinstated, and year after year, they have been denied. I assume that your reasoning for denying funding for gifted programming is that gifted students are fine, they don't need extra resources, but I have seen that that is far from the truth. Gifted students at MCPS are hurting. Many are not consistently getting the challenge that they need to thrive. Their favorite time of the week is often the one hour per week that they spend with their gifted resource teacher. Why do they enjoy that hour so much? I believe that is because during that time, they receive appropriate stimulation and learn new things. As articulated in the vision statement of MCPS, every single student deserves to be subject to high expectations and to experience continuous growth. When we fail to deliver on that promise, it should be treated as an emergency. I also know that you are going to discuss equity today, and I would like to point out that gifted education is also an equity issue. When gifted education is not adequately funded, it is the gifted children from families with few resources who suffer the greatest harm. Some parents have the ability to remove their child from public school if they feel that the school's not meeting their children's developmental needs. And this is not a theoretical point. Many parents have, in fact, removed their gifted children from MCPS in recent years. In addition, gifted children from families with time and resources can advocate, those families can advocate for their child and provide enrichment outside of school. That's not the case for gifted children from families with few resources. They have the most to lose when gifted education is not taken seriously in the public schools. So once again, I'm asking you to please increase funding for gifted education at MCPS, and specifically, I'm asking that the gifted department be allowed to hire at least two additional staff members to bring gifted staff up to the pre-recession levels of years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. After Ms. Miller, Heather Cox at Lindsay Fox.
Good evening. My name is Susan Miller. I live at 3065 Mud Pike Road in Christiansburg, and I live in the Auburn Strand. I'm here tonight because I understand that elementary physical education will be reduced to one period a week next year of 45 minutes. We now currently have two periods of 30 minutes a week, which means our children receive physical education on the elementary level for a total of 36 hours a year, and we have a huge set of SOLs to teach during that time. And I've been sick, so pardon my croakiness. As a teacher and a curriculum coordinator for Montgomery County Public Schools, and as a college professor at Radford University and at Salem College in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, it would never have occurred to me to order, to offer less than one period of physical education a week to children. The CDC does not recommend it. The NIH does not recommend it. The Commonwealth of Virginia does not recommend it. It is not appropriate for a growing child to sit for hours without coordinated planned movement education to bring oxygen to the brain. Brain cells grow with movement. We have research proving that. Also, students are supposed to receive 125 minutes of physical activity during the week, and that really doesn't include recess. Recession can be organized chaos. Physical education is taught by a teacher who is certified. Physical activity is a supervised activity, as is recess, and they are not one in the same. What if we offered math for one period a week and gave worksheets for the other four days a week? Would that be the equivalent of one hour of physical education and recess for the other four days? What if we did that with science? What if we did that with gifted? I don't think the impact of that would be received well within the community. And my notes are scattered, and I'm sorry. What is the research statement that's offered to support the lack of physical education? I noticed in some of the information presented to the teachers that the research information dealt with scheduling and how schedules improve the ability to plan. What about the activity of children? The rate of obesity? If we could look at the obesity levels in Montgomery County as demonstrated through aggregate data of BMIs, which we could easily gather male and female by gender and not by name, we would find out that in Montgomery County, we have a very high level of obesity in some areas of the community. Removing some part of physical education does not help that. I hope, I hope that children could be receiving 60 or more minutes of moderate to vigorous physical activity every week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. After Lindsay Fox, it will be Greg Two.
Hello. Heather Cox, 1006 Morning Dove Drive. Thank you all for all you do and for letting us speak tonight. As I hope you know, I advocate for public school funding, and I was really happy to see that budget that Dr. Meyer mentioned earlier. What you might not know is that I'm a registered dietitian, and I teach food and nutrition and management courses at Virginia Tech. I'm telling you this because I want to work with you to be part of a solution to what I think is a more balanced approach to funding our school nutrition program. I understand the role of contract management, possible savings with broadline distributors, USDA child nutrition programs, the constraints we work within, and the losses over the last five years. I get it. Something needed to change to balance the budget. My ask is that you take a more balanced approach to using competitive foods in our schools to balance that budget. I want to share some definitions and thought questions. So these are competitive foods that my children purchased in the à la carte line at their high school today. So competitive foods are any non-meal food item for sale to students during the school day. They are not the foods that are in vending machines for our teachers, they are not parties and celebration foods unless we establish that as our wellness policy. So these are à la carte competitive foods. They're called competitive foods because they literally compete with the desire or potential for students to participate in the meal, so not the food items themselves, the meal. So some of the competitive foods that we sell are appropriate, like when a child wants to buy an entree, right? These foods all meet the standards that are established that I'm sure we're going to hear about. They've been modified to meet the standards so that we can sell them in our schools. We don't get reimbursements from the USDA or USDA foods if we don't meet the standards. But I don't think these foods meet the intent of the standards. I really don't believe that they meet the intent. I don't think that these are the foods that we want to be selling to our kids in our schools. So another way to think about using competitive foods to balance the budget is to think about, what if we couldn't fund our transportation? That's in operations, right? So what if we sold these foods on the school bus before, after school to see, let, if we could fund those fuel costs, those fleet costs? Would we feel okay about that? It's an operations cost, we have to fund it somehow, is this how we'd want to do it? I would ask you to think about those things, and I really, really want to help and be part of the solution, so please let me know how I can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Lindsay Fox, and then Greg Two, and then Julie Fox.
Thank you. My name is Lindsay Fox, 1103 Cam Drive, Blacksburg. Thank you, Dr. Meyer and the board. My request is for a committee to review the current nutrition contract with TNG before renewal, in particular, to eliminate competitive snacks from being sold during regular meals at the elementary level. When I was in grade school, my mom and dad both worked long hours to provide for a blended family of seven. I was barely five when I knew asking for more of anything was not helpful, even though they would have wanted to provide it for us. My parents would have been too busy working and taking care of us to let the school know daily or even weekly extra foods were making things a little bit harder for our family. Please don't think that because you don't hear from some parents who are struggling financially, or because they now have one more place to fight against unhealthy foods, that it means parents have not been burdened by the increase in competitive snacks for sale. I have heard the sentiment from caregivers from around the county. Some stopped purchasing school lunch because of the added costs and items. And speaking with Dr. Sandy Kerwood, the Virginia Department of Education Director of the Office of School Nutrition, she said this regarding our current program. Their plan to improve meals should not be funded on the backs of children, and the goal in feeding our children should be improving school lunch, not selling extras. That is what they should be doing. She said this is doable without the extra foods. To concerns over teacher vending machines and birthday celebrations, she stated, according to Virginia Code 22.1-207.4, smart snack standards do not apply to vending machines in the teacher's lounge, birthday parties, or celebrations unless the school board has made this a local decision or added it to the local wellness policy. The recycling program at Harding is made up of volunteers who give of their time to help children clear trays and roll them back to the kitchen. As they help clear trays and visit with kids, they see what they are and aren't eating. From their direct observations, inequities were mixed with nutritional concerns. Often, they see empty wrappers from cookie bars and chips while uneaten fruits and veggies from the lunch meal are thrown away, especially on ice cream day when many children naturally opt to eat their dessert before their regular meal so it doesn't melt. Volunteers, including myself, saw children asking if they had enough when going through the lunch line, meaning money, on their, on their account for add-ons. Many children don't ask at all because they know the answer already. When we make a decision in PTA, we ask, is this good for all kids? Competitive snacks provide a double negative. Research in the recent state PTA resolution shows they are inequitable and cumulatively unhealthy. We've known for a long time bellies full of healthy food help children focus and learn better. This is why the National PTA advocated legislation for a federal lunch program long before it was enacted in 1946. As a state PTA representative, I'm advocating for a more equitable and healthy solution to pay for school lunch. I hope that tonight you decide to allow willing stakeholders a seat to assist in a review of the current contract and to remove competitive smart snacks from lunch in our elementary schools. I will continue to advocate to fully fund education, and appreciate your efforts and all our teachers and staff do for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg Two, after that, Julie Fox and Justin Brantley.
Hello, my name is Greg Two. I live at 415 Piedmont Street in Blacksburg. We have a health crisis in the United States. A recent Harvard study estimates half of all adults in the U.S. will be obese by 2030. That's just 10 years from now, and in 10 years, the students in our schools will be adults. And make no mistake, Doritos, ZZ bars, Trix yogurt, and a long list of other branded foods sold in our schools are junk food. Sure, the Doritos sold in the cafeteria line, if we just saw, have been specially formulated to exactly meet the maximum allowable junkiness served by the smart snacks program, but that simply makes the reduced-fat Doritos and other à la carte foods slightly less junky than the version sold at 7-Eleven. Now, I agree with recent statements from a board member and our superintendent that parents are responsible for student food choices, but only when the parent is there to supervise their child. During the school day, school leaders are the supervising adults, and tempting children every day with junk food in the cafeteria is irresponsible. The food manufacturers are very good at formulating their snacks to trigger cravings in our brains that even adults can't resist. Give me the choice of an apple or a bag of Doritos, and I'll grab the Doritos every time, but if I'm hungry and the only choice is an apple, I'll eat the apple. The salt and fats and chips are a problem, but added sugar has perhaps become the biggest health concern in manufactured food today. The American Heart Association recommends no more than 25 grams of added sugar per day, yet one ZZ bar has 14 grams of added sugar, 56% of the daily maximum. I also volunteer occasionally at Beeks, and I saw one day a young boy walking out with three ZZ bars on his tray. The obesity, obesity is not a disease one discovers after a series of medical tests. Obesity is a disease that develops with one, with thousands of food choices, including temptations we have in our schools today. Consider this example. If a student ate one ZZ bar each school day from first grade through high school, they will have consumed 67 pounds of added sugar. I understand the budget is challenging, but when we solve our school food budget problem by adding costs to healthcare, we haven't actually solved any problems. I'm here to ask you to eliminate all à la carte foods in our schools K through 12. Do this for the health of our children and find other ways to balance the food budget with the input of all stakeholders. If that solution ultimately leads to the need for higher taxes, you'll have my full support. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Julie Fox, Justin Brantley, and Daniel Thompson.
Hi, my name is Julie Fox. I live at 1350 Sandy Circle in Blacksburg. I recently served as the PTA president at Prices Fork Elementary. I currently work as a program coordinator for the parent and community education programs of a local nonprofit. Former USDA undersecretary Shirley Watkins said this to Congress. Competitive foods undermine the nutritious integrity of programs and discourage participation. Since only children with money can purchase competitive foods, children may perceive that school meals are primarily for the poor children rather than nutritious programs for all children. Certainly, this is not what we want our children to think about our school lunch program. These extra à la carte items are unnecessary, unhealthy, and inequitable. All families should be able to send their kids to school knowing that they will be fed a nutritious meal, and families who qualify for free and reduced lunch should be able to do this without worrying about the stigma attached and without feeling pressured to somehow provide extra money for those items. I understand the data presented to you by Mr. Carrance tonight will show, schools with high percentages of families living in poverty are spending money on à la carte items. I spent a lot of volunteer time at Prices Fork Elementary School. I have heard, I have seen, and I have felt poverty stigma. Last year, our PTA closed our school store after witnessing the impact it had on so many young students who arrived at school with the choice to either be excluded or somehow figure out how to find enough money for that cool pencil sharpener or eraser that other kids have. Families are feeling the same pressure in our cafeterias, and it really doesn't have to be that way. I encourage you to consider that choices people make about money reflect more than what's on the surface. These choices are often tied to stigma, and as parents, we make as many choices as we can to help our kids avoid feeling stigmatized at school. can to help our kids avoid feeling stigmatized at school. Living in poverty is a traumatic experience. Trauma deeply impacts human behavior. Let's recognize that as we draw conclusions from the data that will be presented tonight. The stigma created by programs that exclude magnifies all other programs, I mean, all other problems children living in poverty face as they try to achieve their full potential. Please make the reasonable and responsible decision to eliminate competitive foods from our elementary schools. These are critical gears for forming healthy habits. Let's take this opportunity to come up with positive solutions such as increasing participation in nutritious school lunch programs and enrolling some of our schools in the CEP. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Justin Bradley, Danielle Thompson, and Sharon Caffrey.
Hi, my name is Justine Brantley, and I live at 1104 Deerfield Drive in Blacksburg, and I appreciate the opportunity to share my thoughts and feelings about some issues tonight. I have a kindergartner and a third grader at Keps Elementary School, and I'm a former middle school teacher in the county, and currently I'm a program coordinator on a grant at Virginia Tech. I would like for my kids to buy school lunch. What parent doesn't want to save that time, right? It's valuable time that we spend packing lunches every morning, and I've got a lot of other things on my to-do list that I could really spend that time doing instead. The reason I don't is because I don't want my kids to have access to unhealthy options, especially at such a young age when, of course, they're going to choose things that taste good, and, I mean, you know, if there's a sugar option, they're going to choose that one. Ensuring that lunches are healthier and snack distractions fewer would go a long way toward making me feel better about them buying their lunch, and I know that I'm not the only parent who feels this way, and I believe that participation in buying lunch has the potential to grow a great deal. Additionally, this is really an easy opportunity for our community to improve a social justice issue for our kids. How often do we have the opportunity to solve or to make better an issue like that? This one feels small enough to me that we really could make it better for kids on a daily basis. Do we want our schools to further the divide between students who can afford extra spending money for added snacks and those who can't? Do we want to profit from developing sugar addiction in our students? Because that seems like, a little bit like what we're doing now. Or do we want to help our students learn to make good choices at mealtime and keep inequity out of our cafeterias? I believe that we should really keep the campaign going to continue improving school lunches, because I know that there has been an effort to do that in the county, and spread the word that Montgomery County Schools is serious about nurturing their students through healthy lunches and equitable systems. In the future, we could work to include nutritious options from local farms, we've got a lot of that around here, and educate students about all the healthy local food options that exist so close to home. We could plan for a welcome dinner at each school at the beginning of the year where parents and students could try a meal and get excited about breakfast and lunch options. There are ways to increase awareness and to encourage parents to get excited about having their kids participate in buying school lunch. This is an opportunity for Montgomery County Schools to excel in creating a healthy school culture and to increase participation in the lunch program. Feeding our students well twice a day is a really exciting chance to take good care of them, and that's why we're here. And we have the power to make sure children don't feel less than in the cafeteria. We have the power to do that. As a next step, eliminating the extra snack foods from at least elementary schools and assembling a committee to review the contract with TNG before renewing with them are important steps toward these goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle Thompson, Sharon Caffrey, and Pamela Teaster.
Hi, my name is Danielle Thompson. I live at 1404 Highland Circle in Blacksburg. I come to you tonight as a former educator in high-poverty schools. I taught for over 15 years in a school that had 98% poverty and as a parent in the district. My request is for the committee to review the current nutrition contract and to eliminate competitive foods being sold during regular meals at the elementary level. I want to start with a quick story that opened my eyes to nutrition as a new parent. We lived in Germany for a few years when my children were very young. For my oldest son's third birthday, I brought shark cupcakes to the preschool to celebrate. When I arrived at the end of the day, I expected the cupcakes to be gone and to be praised as the fun American mom. What I found was that none of the cupcakes had been eaten, a few had been nibbled, and the little German children kept telling me how gross the frosting was. What I learned during my short time about nutritious food while I lived in Germany really surprised me. When nutritious food is the norm, children don't want to choose to eat it, unhealthy When we moved back to the U.S., my children quickly reverted to, quickly began denying foods that they used to eat, like bell peppers and cucumbers that were the norm for snacks while they were in their little preschool. I don't need to tell you that obesity is a problem in the U.S. and in our state. According to a 2017 government study, almost 30% of children aged 10 to 17 have a BMI in Virginia in the 85th percentile. Obesity contributes to many problems directly and indirectly, as we've heard. Children are more likely to become the perpetrators of bullying. It found, another big study found that obese children reported decreased levels of self-esteem, higher levels of sadness, loneliness, and nervousness compared to their normal-weight counterparts, and this continued four years later at a follow-up study. There's a lot of research into how competitive snacks change the dynamic in a lunchroom. They create diet-related health risks such as increased cardiovascular disease, problems that will occur later into adulthood. They adversely affect participation in the school nutrition lunch plans. They convey a mixed message. Students are learning about healthy eating and balanced nutrition, but then they go to the lunchroom and find Gatorade and other snacks that have high sugar content.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you. Sharon Caffrey and Pamela Teaster.
I live at 413 Hartwood Crossing in Blacksburg. Good evening, Dr. Meyer, members of the board, and Mr. Krantz. I'm one of the parents who became concerned about school food last August when my six-year-old daughter announced to me there was going to be a weekly ice cream day. I didn't know anything about the school food program then, and I'm willing to admit I have a lot to learn about it. I've attended almost all of your meetings this year, and I've come to appreciate that you have lots of obstacles to negotiate in a wide range of areas, and the school food program is just one of them. And I want you to know that I recognize you have a really hard job. And you might be viewing me and my group as adversaries, but we're not. We truly want to work with you in figuring out how to make the school food program exemplary. For the past 24 years, I have been a health and fitness professional. Many of my clients are overweight, and they wish to lose weight. And although I'm not a nutritionist, I do discuss with all clients about healthy dietary choices and their caloric consumption habits. As just one example, many of my clients have grown up drinking juice instead of eating whole fruit. Research shows kids and adults who daily consume caloric beverages tend to be heavier. One of these reasons is calories from beverages are not satiating, so they can contribute to overconsumption of calories throughout the day. If you overconsume just 50 calories per day, you will gain over five pounds in a year, or five pounds exactly if it was 50 calories a day. When I show my clients how much work it takes to burn 50 to 100 calories, they are often disheartened. It requires a lot of effort to burn calories, and it's easy to consume them. While it is challenging to establish healthy habits in adulthood, it is even more difficult to break bad habits developed as children. I see this struggle with many adults. It would be so much better if they had initially developed healthy habits when they were kids. In compliance with the USDA school food standards at school, juice is offered as an equivalent to whole fruit, even though juice is not whole fruit. Just because something meets the standards does not mean it is healthy. Montgomery County Public Schools can do a lot better than just meeting the minimum standards for the food program, just as it has done in other areas of education. Our immediate ask this evening is that a stakeholder committee be formed to look at the current food program contract and to remove competitive snacks from elementary school during school hours. But our long view goal is to all work together to advance the school food program from being a support service, as it is now, to becoming a stellar and as integral a part of children's education as reading and math. That will require innovation, but when has Montgomery County Public Schools ever suffered from being innovative? Thank you.
Thank you. We have only one individual left.
I have to tell you that you reached the 30-minute timer.
We have to extend 30 minutes? Yeah. I have a motion to extend the 30 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. It's good to hear your voice.
That first time I talk, I guess, is always a little weird, right? It's that booming voice from the ceiling.
It's nice that you can hear us. That's a good test, Ms. Teaster. You have three minutes.
My name is Pamela Teaster. I live at 411 Hartwood Crossing, Blacksburg, Virginia, and I am pleased to summarize some key points of the fine speakers who have come before me. I'm a mother of a son who attended Blacksburg High School and graduated in 2017, and a daughter who is a gymnast and a current fifth grader. I am a professor and director of the Center for Gerontology at Virginia Tech and the interim director of the Masters of Public Health Program. I'm an ethicist and an advocate for social justice for more than 20 years. I am fortunate to have a unique and intergenerational understanding of the problem of fostering eating habits because of what my colleagues discuss is an upstream problem with sometimes dire downstream consequences at the individual, family, and community in the nation. We face three epidemics now: the worldwide impact of the COVID-19, the opioid epidemic, and the obesity epidemic. It is to this I speak. As Mr. Two said, by 2030, nearly one in two adults will be obese and nearly one in four will be severely obese. What does this mean for an aging population? And we are all aging. It means that the top five chronic conditions, diabetes, two, coronary heart disease, arthritis, high cholesterol, and hypertension, all are affected by our genes, but all are mollified by diet and exercise, and we also know by research that SES is always a factor. Strong arguments to address the issues before us. It is problematic fostering a lifetime of bad eating habits, taking advantage of branding, and making the school budget strong through these efforts. Adult brains are not formed at this time. They are only formed by the 20s, by one's 20s. We all know that from our children. As a former high school teacher, school should be a place where health and wellness are valued as learning how to read, math, and do math. Aspirationally, school should be a place where making healthy choices and developing healthy eating habits are a big part of the learning plan. I ask that you please support this group of stakeholders to review the contract in order to address competitive foods that is not smart snacking and improve nutrition in our schools and foster creative, innovative ways for our children who will become adults and who will become older adults to increase participation in breakfast and lunch programs as well. Habits formed in childhood can and do last a lifetime. We can do better than adherence to minimums. We are, after all. Montgomery County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. These are all the individuals signed up to speak to us tonight, and thank you all for being here and addressing to the board. At this time, our public address is closed. Next item on our agenda is our consent items. We'll get back to where I am. And you see board members, a few field trips. If you don't have any questions, we'll accept them as they are under the consent agenda. Any questions regarding any trips? Not? I am moving on paying our bills. May I have a motion to pay our bills?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? We pay our bills. Now, we are entering our business part of the meeting, and first will be our student rep report, and Kushi, floor is yours.
Okay. Juniors are open to order class rings this week, as well as seniors are also allowed to if they do not order or like to order anything else. We have a robotics competition this week in Salem, I believe. Congrats to Track for winning, for their wins in the mile, and then congrats to Mac for winning their Eastern tournament. It's also beta week, so make sure everybody stops by. There'll be lunches and snacks, and then it's, we wear ribbons, I believe, on Thursday. That'll be it.
Thank you. Any questions to Kushi? Any board members? Thank you. Next will be our board member reports. Anybody who likes to take the floor first? I'm looking. Do you want to go, Ms. Branton?
I don't know if this is on. Okay, it is. I'll echo what Dr. Meyer said as far as our recruitment efforts, and the community dinner was wonderful. I think we probably had about 85 participants to come. One gentleman was from Las Vegas who had come in to apply in Montgomery County Schools. It's just been a wonderful experience for our group to be able to host this dinner for folks who want to come and be a part of Montgomery County, and we feel truly appreciated by them, by them not wanting to leave. We have to say, it's time to go home because we want to go home too. But it's a wonderful, wonderful event, and we look forward to it every year. I was not able to attend the conference for teachers of color, but I did video in, or do a video, to help talk about the efforts we are making in Montgomery County around minority recruitment, and I just really wish I could have attended, but I couldn't be in about three places that day.
Have we missed you. Any other board members like to continue? I'm looking. Anything that you want to share, Ms.
Cass? The only thing I have to add is I went to recent Blacksburg Town Council meeting as our council rep, and it appears that there is a fair amount of development that'll be going on in Blacksburg over the next several years. They're really focused on more middle-income and affordable housing, which beyond just the student housing, so, which means we'll probably see, you know, more influx of young people and children into our neighborhoods, so it's something we'll have to keep an eye on over time. But there's several different developments in the works right now, so.
Thank you for being there. It's nice to be connected with them. That's about it. Any other board members? Ms. Crantz?
Sure, thanks. I attended the interview day that they had special for math, CTE, and special ed, and got to meet some of our new hires, which was great to hear their aspirations and their passion for teaching. I also have done our, I guess we had our last meeting for the action team for instruction that I was part of, and I just want to say I am truly blown away by the knowledge that we have in Montgomery County and the passion that we have for doing what's best for students and their learning. I have learned a tremendous amount myself, and I felt like I have grown, so I wanted to thank the instruction team for doing that for me.
Thank you. Any other board members? Ms. Parkin?
Sure. Sure. We had our last learning environment committee meeting, Ms. Bond and I attended on February the 19th with Mr. Husband and Mr. Krantz, who are the leaders of that. Ms. Lois was there as well. She was helping us work on our action steps, our plans, and our cost-benefit analysis. I think our team did a wonderful job. We had all kinds of great information. We're very excited to present, and we hope that we can propose some very awesome things that that we think would be great for learning environments, so we're very excited about that. Saturday, this past Saturday, the 29th, I actually attended a fundraiser. It's actually, was an event to help raise money for a scholarship in the name of Ashlyn Poole, and it's called Acts for Ash. If you all aren't familiar with that scholarship or that organization, this has to do with a junior at Christiansburg High School that was tragically lost in a car accident in July over a year ago. Her parents got together and formed this Acts for Ash, and basically what they do is they want to go have students spread kindness, and they've done some really great things for a really great cause. So this was a dress drive where people donated their formal dresses for people to come and get for prom, get for homecoming dance. They had a chance to win a free dress and free services. You get entered into a drawing, but you could get a dress for $20. So that money went directly into that scholarship, and like I said, it was just a great cause. We had a great turnout, so that was awesome to attend. That's always a good event. And I would like to say something personal. My daughter made the JV softball team again this year, so I just wanted to say congratulations to her, and I'm very excited for the year. I hope it warms up soon.
That's exciting. Thank you, Ms. Barton.
Yes.
Ms. Bond? Anything to add?
The only thing I got to do is go to the Christiansburg Town Council meeting, and it was quite exciting, I have to say.
And thank you for being there.
Christiansburg Town Council's a little different. They actually kind of speak with the crowd sometimes if they're, you know, have a subject, so they're always, it's, it's really kind of cool because they always welcome me, and they always, you know, hey, what's happening? Is there anything you want to share? And I did get to share when they had, they go over their future, what's happening in their meetings and what's coming up on their agendas and things like that, and, and our situation with looking to, you know, changing the zoning, it came up, and I was able to say, you know, what our intentions were. So publicly, that was kind of cool to be able to do that and just to say, you know, even though it comes across as a commercial, that's not what we're looking to do. We're looking to just keep it within our own county vehicles, so. But that was it, but they had a exciting meeting, nothing to do with us, but wow. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Chabaka, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I was gonna, can you hear me okay, by the way? Not too loud, not too quiet?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So I did, I visited a couple of the, you know, Passion Project-type fairs. I think one of them was an ILEAD, was an ILEAD group, ILEAD's group, and another one, the Blacksburg Middle School Passion Project, which is kind of nice to see, to see that happening at the middle school level as well. And I, you know, just great programs there, excited to see that kind of growing, wishing and hoping for, to see more of that, not just for our gifted students even, but, you know, I'm, I'm also seeing the value and seeing those programs kind of rub off on, on some of our other, our other areas as well, so. But I do agree with our second speaker, Ms. Anna, tonight, that, you know, increasing our, our gifted participation, our staff, it would be something that would be good. I'm going to take a moment to brag a little bit on, on our staff, and I don't know that I've, if I've done this publicly before, but, you know, one of the things that, that I appreciate about Dr. Meyer, and one of his strengths, I think, is identifying good people and good leaders to put under him. And one of the things that I'm starting to do is, you know, I know a lot of us meet with Dr. Meyer one-on-one. I've also started to try to rotate meetings in with Annie and with Tommy, and I had those meetings this past, this past month, and both of them went really great. I, you know, even in talking with, with some of the parents who have reached out to us with the concerns on the nutrition program, I think everybody is, you know, finding, working with Tommy to be, to be a really good experience, and, and he provides, you know, good numbers and good knowledge, and just really feel like we're, we're heading in, in great directions. I had a great meeting with, kind of two meetings in a row, poor Annie. I think we met for two hours on, you know, things in general for curriculum, and instruction, and also on the instruction groups, so I'll, I'll echo what, what Ms., what Ms. Graham said there. And I also got in a, two school visits to meet with some of our new principals at Harding Avenue and at Blacksburg High School. So that's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chabaka. I think I did not skip over anybody, and lastly, it will be my report, and I did, Mr. Chabaka's comments, I did meet with Mr. Krantz, a long meeting as well, and I always enjoy meeting with all our administrators. I am part of the Mental Health Action Plan Committee, so we had two meetings this month, and we are ready to present as well, and I can't believe that March 18th is around the corners, but I'm really looking forward to having 160-plus people working on it and five big important areas, and I'm like really curious how it is coming together. I know Ms. Graham, Dr. Graham shared the folder, but didn't get a chance, but I can't wait to see what is, what is in there. I attended Bellevue and Margaret Beeks' Passion Fairs. I was in Richmond with Virginia Teachers of Colors, Education Association Teachers of Color Conference, and we really did miss you, Ms. Franklin, but it was nice to hear your voices in those clips, and we had presentation on alternative model of professional skills. We call it MCPS emts. That is providing a teacher licensure, and we are the first in the state approved to do so, teaching teachers without licenses or career switchers within 30 months, giving them five, six courses, and then they will be in our classroom, and they don't have to pay tuition, and at the end, they will be licensed teacher for us, and hopefully they will continue to work for us. And also, the other part of it is the minority retention and recruitment. We shared our community dinners, minority socia's, and we had, even though it was at the end of the day, and usually the, the people that know conferences will know what happens in a conference at the end of the last day, usually you will have only a few people in the audience, but this was not the case, and it was almost full house and well-attended, and we had a lot of kudos. Also, I attended Shoused Middle School Research Event, and unfortunately, I thought I was on time, but I missed the Blacksburg Middle School. They were already cleaning up. Then I went to Ober Middle School Research Event as well, and I was at the Job Fair this past Saturday, shaking a lot of hands and a lot of exciting new teachers, and, and also I was part of the community dinner, and the food was delicious, and it was full house. I don't know what we will do next time, how we can feed all those people. And that will wrap up my board reports, and we'll continue it to VSBA Equity and Education Month Proclamation.
Yes. So this is the first year that VSBA has celebrated Equity and Education Month. Approval of the proclamation will support the VSBA efforts. We continue our district's work on equity with our Director of Equity and Diversity, Ms. Diggs. We also have a Strategic Plan Action Team currently working on our sixth-year vision for equity in MCPS. Tonight, we're asking you to approve this proclamation to, to continue to recognize Equity in Education Month.
May I have a motion to approve the Equity in Education Month Proclamation as presented?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and second. Any discussion? Any questions on that? I think pretty straightforward, but all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We approve the proclamation.
All right, thank you. Next, the Community Use of School Facilities Policy Update. You first saw this policy at the last school board meeting. Since then, we've added the rental fees for middle and high school gyms. We had, accidentally left those out. The version at our last meeting only had a fee for the elementary gyms. We're asking you to approve this policy revision tonight.
May I have a motion to approve the revisions to policy 2-4.1 as presented?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussions? Any further questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve our policy 2-4.1.
Okay, thank you. Next, you've asked for a presentation on our school nutrition program. Tonight, we have Mr. Krantz to provide more information on the partnership with TNG and the offerings in our school cafeteria.
Thank you, Dr. Meyer, school board members, and the audience. This is something that's near and dear to me, just because on the commercial sector, the food service and entertainment was something that, that's where I made my money, was to care of me and my family for the rest of their lives. And as a parent of four children and now six grandchildren, it's also something that's very near and dear to me. I've got here up with tonight the team, because it's not one person. It is a team that makes up this process, so I want to introduce who's here, just so if, as you have questions, I can get it to the right individuals. So I'm going to start with Jessica Anzalone, and I'm not going to say it correctly. She's the daughter of the owner who started TNG, and she's now the managing director and an owner of TNG. Joe Gizwell is the Director of Operations. Sarah Weiger is the Regional Director of Operations. I think I got everybody's names right. Chuck Davis is our Food Service Director here locally. Where's Kathleen?
There's all, there's.
Yeah, so Kathleen Freeman's also one of the Food Service Directors. Kelly Robinson's a Food Service Director, and then Tim Davis is the chef who's taking care of all the catering operations we've done over time. So you can see the team that's behind TNG and what we do. Just to tell you the regulations that the, the school nutrition program does have to comply with. First off, the school nutrition program was set up as, and is intended to be a self-sufficient program. So any dollars it earns and any dollars it makes has to stay within school nutrition. Those dollars cannot go to the general purpose fund. Okay? School nutrition dollars can only be used for the benefit of the school nutrition program, period. As you generate excess funds, those dollars are generally spent buying new kitchen equipment, upgrading facilities to a limited extent, because you can't supplant, as we're well aware of, between the federal statutes and grants and what we do in our general purpose app. The program itself is governed by the USDA. There's two main programs: the National School Lunch Program and the School Breakfast Program. And we'll talk about the finances of each when we get to that, to that particular point. We get reimbursed by the state from the federal government when we sell a free, a reduced, or full-paid meal. It's on all three. They're not, the reimbursement rate the same. We'll bring that up here in a second, but we get a reimbursement from those programs when we sell the meal. The other thing we get is what's called commodity dollars. Commodity dollars are dollars that are allocated to us by the USDA that can be used for specific purposes as determined by each state agency. Some states, for example, allow you to use the dollars to reprocess your chicken nuggets and certain center-of-the-plate type-related items. Other states do a little bit more control on it. We also participate in the Child and Adult Care Food Program. So it's not just the above ones. We also have a program there. We also have an active summer food service program, and we also participate in a special milk program. And lastly, we participate in the Smart Snack Program. So smart snacks are basically anything we sell during breakfast and or lunch that's not part of our reimbursable meal. And we talked about the commodity. Now, what got us to the discussion we had back in November of 2018, as well as subsequent discussions even in February 2019, is since 2014 and even before, we've lost through 2019 about $1.3 million. That loss, as you see our revenues, our revenues grew by $137,000 from '14 to 2019, which is an increase of 3.61%. And here's a comparison. From FY 2018, I mean, 2019, to FY 2020, the reimbursement rate on a full-paid lunch, which is the highest reimbursement we get, went up 10 cents, which was a 3.6% increase. We only went up 3.6% over six years, which indicates that our participation levels are just not there. There's only so much you can do to limit your expenses, because when you look at, and we'll, we'll use a school here in a second, when you look at what the expense is just to open the kitchen, there's a certain number you have to have, and in order to do that, you have to generate your reimbursements. When we looked at FY '19 back in '18 and '19, we thought, we projected our loss to be about If you recall, during FY '19, we wanted to lower that loss, and one of the things is, was increase in participation, and so we participated by bringing in Domino's. We participated, and that qualified into smart snacks. It was not a product you could buy in a store. The dough itself actually comes out of Canada, and as a result of that, we saw an increase in our meals. And it was allowed to be a reimbursement because it met all the requirements of the reimbursable meal side. Some key performance facts. As of January 2020, we've seen our revenues under TNG go to $2.7 million. It's been 117% of their budget, so when they did their RFP, and they gave us an estimate, they projected what the revenues were going to be, and right now, today, we're beating it. Our expenses have come in at $2.83 million. Our net loss today is $44,000. They had budgeted to be at $62,000. So in your first year, you're going to have startup. They initially thought they would have fewer food service directors here than what they have today, because of some of the challenges they've had in gearing up and in trying to generate the sales and doing the things we need to do, because this has been different for our staff. Today, they're forced to learn how to do a production record. Most school systems have done that since the beginning of time. Today, they're the ones inputting the inventory. In the past, it's been done by somebody in central office. This is, again, something that most systems do today, because you, as the manager, understand it the best, and it forces you to understand your operations, and what are you selling? What are you bringing students into your, into your cafeteria, into your kitchen area? Those are things that is being done today that hasn't been done in the past by our cafeteria managers. And so we saw a slight increase in our loss. We also, what TNG saw, was the fresh fruits and vegetables, which is a significant reason why they were selected. Their program says, if I buy a reimbursable meal, I can get unlimited fruits and vegetables. And that's pretty unheard of when you look at the cost of what fruits and vegetables cost today. They saw that at the beginning of the year, our students went probably a little heavier than what their normal district had seen, to a level that if I remember what Sarah told me, was the highest that they as a company had ever seen, and that also contributed to part of our loss. Now, one thing to, to keep in mind, because I've heard, you know, and I appreciate with the parents and staff, under the contract and under state law, all dollars, every dollar that school nutrition earns, whatever the sale may be, goes to Montgomery County Public Schools. Not one dollar goes to TNG. The only money that goes to TNG is what we write them for the management fee and admin fee. The financial responsibility is solely on MCPS, and that's why tonight, I'm here making the presentation, then a representative from TNG, because ultimately, that falls on me. We actually, in the month of January, saw a $64,000 profit, and à la carte sales are at 20.22% for the period of time through January 31st. Now, there's been a discussion about à la carte, and we'll get into a little bit more detail, but one thing I want to say at this point, when TNG did detail, but one thing I want to say at this point, when TNG did their projections, they estimated, just like we would, your lunch reimbursement, your breakfast reimbursement, and your à la carte. Those are your three revenue sources. They estimated their à la carte at 19%. That didn't mean it was gonna actually happen. It was a guess. It was an estimate. But it also was based on the data we gave them in the RFP, which we've always sold à la carte. And you'll see that in a second. The definition of à la carte is really anything that's sold outside of a reimbursable meal. So as the lady, and I, and I don't mean to, to insult anybody when I say the lady, because I just don't remember all the parents' names, okay? But, you know, showed the items that were up here, and she's exactly right. Those are items that are not part of a reimbursable meal. You couldn't get it. You would buy those outside of the reimbursement. That is the definition of an à la carte related item. Now, other things that are in à la carte is if a parent or adult buys a meal, that's not a reimbursable meal. So it's à la carte. If a child buys an extra reimbursable item, so say I buy, you know, an extra center of the plate sandwich, it's not, I only get to claim one reimbursement. If a child buys another item, that's an à la carte item. It's not, does not qualify for reimbursement. Okay? So you got multiple components to it. If a student buys an extra milk, it's à la carte. It's not reimbursement. We talked about the adult meals. We talked about students' second meals. We talked about individual items, which they're correct. If you sell ice cream and chips, that's an à la carte related item. The, from a nutritional standpoint, we are governed on the snack side, as Mr. Two said very eloquently, and other members said it, under the smart snack program. That's the rules at a minimum that we have to meet. Okay? And competitive foods are defined as anything that competes with the school meal program. And the reason for that is the federal government reimburses us a substantial sum of money. They don't want to reimburse food service operations and at the same time have children going during those periods to be getting other foods that competes with the programs that they're subsidizing. When we look at some of the key statistics, a year ago, and, and I'll give that the total, I think, is fairly close, but the accuracy of some of the numbers is only as good as what a cash register person registers it at. Okay? So through, and this was through February 24th, and that's just was the date we looked to pull the data, so I don't, we should've cut it off at a month end, but I apologize. We did. We had done $10,000 of ice cream sales. This year, we've done 102,000. And that's an increase of $92,000 or 888%. One thing we're doing now is TNG sells more variety, just like we've seen with our entrees. We offer more varieties than we've done in the past. They offer more variety with some of their à la carte related items. À la carte, which is gonna be adult meals, second student meals, also chips and other things than ice cream, we've seen an increase of $66,000 to 305,000, which is a 27.5% increase. The à la carte reimbursement, we've seen an increase of $37,000 or 18%. Total à la carte sales, we've seen it go from 457,000, and that's a key because there's been some statements that we've not sold à la carte in the past. That's not been true. And that was during the operation when school nutrition was part, was run by the school system. It's always been part of the, the meal or, or the offerings that school nutrition offered. Right now, we're at $653,000, an increase of $196,000. As a percentage of sales, you see the increase, which is primarily due to the ice cream. We went from 18.79% of total revenue, which includes all the reimbursement, versus today, we're at 20.22%. And we've seen our lunch participation go from 41.29 to 46.30. And your, your lunch participation is the number that determines if your operation's successful financially or not. Because that's the number that gives you the highest reimbursement. Okay? It's not à la carte. It's not breakfast. Give you some interesting information. If I sell a lunch at the highest reimbursement rate I have today, it's a free child, $3.41. On a reimbursement, on a full-paid child, I get $3.10. If I go to breakfast, the breakfast reimbursement at the highest end, okay, which is what they call severe knee, is $2.20. On a full pay, it's only 31 cents. Yet, taking one elementary school, and I won't name it, but just for me to staff it for breakfast and lunch, 16 man-hours, costs me $263 per hour. On this particular school, if I take all their à la carte sales, break that down, I don't make enough to cover what the sale, what the, the payroll is. The financials for a school nutrition operation is a reimbursable lunch. And that's the goal of every food service program that I've ever been associated with, was how do you get children into your kitchen and eat your lunch? Most every program says that your elementary schools, which is a captive market, should have a reimbursement between 70 to 80%. We don't have any school at that number. We have many schools below 40%. A middle school should be at 65%. We don't have any middle school at that number. And a high school should be at 50%, and we don't have one middle school, high school at that number. Our problem is participation. You saw that with the numbers at the beginning of this process. It's the problem today. And it becomes, how do you get kids in? Now, I'm gonna use something that I saw last year at Blacksburg High School. Blacksburg High School, a year ago,'s participation rate was 17%. That's it. That's all that ate lunch. If you went into their kitchen, their dining room, before you got to the last tables that brought you into the kitchen area was their high tops. And the majority of their kids stopped right there. There was a magical wall, and they stopped. They never got to the kitchen. And the minute we brought Domino's in, and I understand what Mr. Two says about branded foods, but the minute we brought Domino's in, because it was Domino's, we saw an increase, and we saw students going into the kitchen to buy food. Now, I can serve the healthiest foods in the world, but if kids don't buy it, have I accomplished anything? No. It's a balance in that, and I understand that. But that's what we face each and every day. And I'm gonna get off my soapbox. So smart snacks standards is 200, we cannot exceed 200 calories per item, and the ZZ bar is our highest calorie item. I think it's 190 calories, if I'm not mistaken. We can't contain on, uh, the fat per item cannot exceed 25%. And I'm not gonna read these, you can see it. And these are, as I think some of, of the speaker said, but these are just minimum standards. But these are the standards we have to meet in order to serve these items in a school day. Now, this gives you just some basic information about all of our elementary schools. And you see the sorting by enrollment with the largest school up at the top, what their free and reduced percentage is, their lunch participation, and you can see, not one of them, I got one at 69.86, but I don't exceed 70%. You can see many of the schools are well below that number. And then you can see what the à la carte sales are. Generally, if you think on à la carte sales, we sell for approximately a dollar on most items. Most of the time, the cost is at least 50 cents. That doesn't include labor costs. That's just food costs. So are we following the regulations? And there's been some discussion with the emails and things like that? The answer is yes. We go what's under the federal program accountability review. That's done every three years today. It used to be every five. Because of going with TNG, the, the state made the review this year sooner. That particular, uh, review focuses on all aspects from a federal guideline standards that we fall under, and they look at everything. And we were found to be in compliance with all the major categories. There was three minor, and they are minor corrections that needed to be done. One, the USDA smart snacks was not uniformly stated throughout the documents of our wellness policy. They wanted it consistently applied. That's been done, and the state has signed off on that, on those changes. Number two, there was a clarification on the assessment of the local wellness policy. That's been put in. Now, that'll be updated under the triennial assessment, which is ongoing right now. And then lastly, is they wanted to see an increase in the advertisement on the summer feeding program, which is something I think they do every year because it's a good program. It's just getting kids to come eat. Some quotes from it, um, and I'll let you read them. At the end of the day, the guidelines when these programs were put in under the Healthy Hunger, you know, Kids Act, was to get more kids to come eat in schools, to get the meals more nutritious, to teach students about nutrition, to get kids to eat healthier and helpfully change the obesity problems that this country has. I'm an example of that. And it has. But at the end of the day, there's other, you know, just as we say a reaction, there's an opposite and equal reaction. There's also the same thing here in our school nutrition. If we have $121,000 sitting in the reserve to start the year off, remember, we projected a $350,000 loss, and we came in at 207. If we had achieved the $350,000 loss, we would've had to written a check from the general operating fund to the school nutrition fund. There is no choice. By law, you have to fund it. And if you don't have it in the budget, you have to take something out of your budget to properly fund it. If we had gotten rid of that and continued the losses of 200-plus thousand dollars a year, that would've been a drain on the general purpose fund. We don't have an option. You, as a board, do not have a choice on that. It has to come from somewhere, and the budget has to stay balanced. So when we talk about TNG, there's been some things that I want to set, um, some things correct. So there's been some discussion that the TNG contract was not transparent. I strongly, and I brought Angie here from the purchasing side, strongly disagree with that. That contract was properly advertised, properly posted for the meetings with the school board, and it's been very transparent. Number two, we had three companies that are all national, international companies apply for it. All of them submitted very good qualifications and very good programs, all of which was very similar to what TNG submitted. There's, you know, some belief on the term. It was a one-year term with four renewals. Those renewals automatically occur unless we notify them 60 days in advance before the expiration date. If the desire is to renew the contract, we have to submit it to the state for the state's approval. And that's true on any food service management company contract. Now, there's a, there's been some statements made that somehow TNG makes all their money through à la carte sales. That is not the case. All revenue is deposited into the MCPS school nutrition account, period. Just like we did before TNG, it's how we do it today. All checks that are written against that account are just like they were before, the MCPS school nutrition account. We are responsible for that. We pay to TNG, under their contract, a fixed rate for their general administrative and management fee, which are allowed by state statute, 170,000. That's all they make out of this contract. Now, if, let's say, for example, our, we're at a break even at the end of the year, TNG has to write a check to the district for $155,000 because they've guaranteed that we will achieve that mark. If we make 100,000, they'll have to write a check for 55. If we make 200, they get their 170, we keep all 200. So it's not tied to the number of meals they sell. Okay? And what drives them is they're in the business of servicing school systems. And yes, they're a for-profit company, and I understand that well, since I did it for a long time. So they are in it to make a buck. But the margin is driven by the competition. Their $155,000 guarantee, the closest competitor was 154,000, and it's the largest food service company in the world who finished second. And that company has contracts here in southwest Virginia, and they're very competitive. TNG was selected by the evaluation, and we did do an evaluation committee. They were selected, and they, look, two of the three did excellent jobs in their, in what they submitted, their interviews, they were all excellent. The committee felt like TNG, because of their size, not being the big international, they're big, they have 245 school accounts. I think that's still your number, huh? About that, 245? But they're small enough, they can still give us individualized attention. Whereas the bigger player, we felt like it was more institutionalized, more fit inside of a box. And I think we've seen that. Dr. Meyer suggested we do a taco, spaghetti taco, which I had never heard until he mentioned that to me. If I had brought that to the second-place company, I don't think I would've seen it because it's, they're so big. It has to fit in their box. TNG, within a couple months, was able to bring that to the, bring that particular item. So my point is this, they're small enough, they're big enough that we get the benefit of a big company. But at the same time, they're small enough that they're able to tailor to what our needs are. Now, I'm gonna wrap my presentation with this, and I think I've said this. I'm not a proponent of management companies. I think I can do everything that a management company does because I've done it. But at the end of the day, I'm one person, just like Michael was and Jenny was. A company like a TNG can do everything I can do and then some because they able to, to take my cost and spread it out over multiple people. They have people who are constantly analyzing what's selling in schools. They have people that are constantly looking for what's the best products, what's the best menus, what's the best things to do to meet their guidelines. And at the end of the day, and I'll, I'll, I'll end it with this. TNG was the only company I've ever seen step up and say, we're gonna do unlimited fruits and vegetables. Typically, a cup of fruit or a cup of vegetables, 25 cents. We can't go above about a buck thirty on the plate cost and meals, on the milk, before you can't pay your bills. And think about what they did. They went unlimited. I think that's indicative of they do promote healthiness and selection of the right food. Jessica, I'm gonna let you, does that, you want to add anything to it?
Sure. I think a couple of us want to come up and say a few things.
Do you mind?
If you're okay with that?
Yes, of course, absolutely.
So, um, as he had said, my name's Jessica Anzalone. I'm the managing director at the Nutrition Group. Sarah Beiger is our regional director of operations, and Joe Geisweit is our VP. Thank you for this opportunity, and please don't think for one second that we take, um, what was said this evening lightly. We too can appreciate how important the health and wellness of our future is, and we too share in that same sentiment. So I think there may have just been some misunderstandings or misinformation, um, and I can tell you, as a representative of TNG, we are more than welcome, or more than willing and would welcome the opportunity to and would welcome the opportunity to sit down and come together. I think we have the same goal. I definitely think there's a win in this, and, you know, keeping our kids' futures and health and well-being at the forefront. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Sarah. You had a few things you wanted to touch on?
Some of the things I wanted to touch on are repetitive to what Mr. Krantz had already said, so I'll just breeze over those a little bit. But I did want to just start off by reassuring you and members of the public that everything that was done to retain the contract for the RFP process were met federal and standard, and federal and state guidelines. In addition to that, us, TNG as a company, pride ourselves on our transparency and our willingness to be honest with all aspects, and that comes with talking to the public or the Board or Administration. The other thing that I wanted to just touch on was what Mr. Krantz had already said, is that any extra profit that comes to the Food Service Fund, regardless if that's from à la carte sales or from lunches, does not benefit us anymore. That does go back to the food service program, which benefits wages, equipment repairs, and so on. So our goal ultimately is to continue to see your program grow and to be able to fund those things. The other thing is that the Nutrition Group is not focused on increasing your profitability by exploiting unhealthy options. That can be seen in the fact that we've increased the amount of stuff that we make in-house. Our à la carte options include many in-site-made items, such as protein packs that we've started, tasty bites, which we make on site, Wellness Wednesday that isn't à la carte, but overall, our program is intended to increase the health of the options that are available. We do have extra à la carte items, we do have snacks. Not saying that we do not. Everything that was up here is stuff that was purchased, and it does meet those Smart Snack Guidelines. But our à la carte program is intended to add additional items for those students that may want an extra snack, not to replace the meal, but maybe they want something else, and, or maybe a teacher wants something, or just to, adult wants something, add a variety to the program. Our, I also wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that the snacks were there, as Mr. Krantz said, before us arriving. I think there's a statistic floating around that may be inaccurate. In 16, in your 17, 18 school year, the à la carte sales for your program was $675,000. So yes, it has increased over the couple of years, but it is not an astronomical increase. Additionally, almost everything you see, except for proprietary things that we've brought into the program, were already here as à la carte options prior to us getting here. Yes, we did add more ice cream, but a lot, almost everything else was already here. We just have increased the variety and the way that we rotate that around. Finally, the wellness policy. We are willing and happy to talk to anybody and anyone about how they want to see the program improve. We're here to be a partner with you, to all of our customers, and, but we do not create that wellness policy. Our, our ability to work with you is based on however you decide to go about doing that, and we're happy to create parent meetings and be more involved in PTA meetings to hear what you want back. But our contract and what we set up for our budget for next year is basically just based on what you want us to do. How you tell us that you want us to control those things just impacts the bottom line, and we're happy to work with you and continue to grow in that partnership. Anything else?
I just have one thing that I thought of earlier today. If for some reason, as a parent, you do not want your child to get chips or ice cream Friday, or whatever day of the week it is, we have people call, and it's a matter of putting a note on the account that that child's parents called, and they cannot be served the ice cream, the, any à la carte. It's, they can pick and choose. And I know, you know, that, I'm sure you're thinking it presents another set of, then, you know, I go through the line and I'm told I can't have the ice cream. So it is, you know, a balancing act that we're more than willing to kind of walk through, talk through, and come to some sort of amicable solution, so, okay.
Well, I would just like to take a second and say thank you so much to you guys, because I've been on this board 14 years, and I was here when we adopted the first nutritional program. And I was so excited, thinking we were gonna do great things, because I truly, truly felt we had a problem in America. And every conference I went to, I went to every session I could on what could make it better and how could make it better, but not one time did I ever hear anything that really is really gonna work. And all I've heard over these years is how everybody hated the lunches. Nobody ate, and I actually had parents come up to me and say, "All you did was cause our kids not to eat lunch and have to, and they're gonna go and eat fast food." And you know what? He was right, because that's what happened. And, you know, I just thank you so much, because now everything I hear is positive. It's positive, people are loving it. And everybody that eats, kids are eating lunch that didn't eat lunch before, and that's the name of the game. And, you know, we can't stop everything. I would like to stop every high school student that comes to school every day with a Starbucks in their hand. You know, I think we need to start looking at the real problems. You can't get in a restaurant on Friday nights anywhere. You can't get in a restaurant during the day at lunchtime in Christiansburg, anywhere. You know, there's a bigger problem here. I used to want to say, "Why don't we have walking programs?" You know, "Why don't we have 10-minute silent lunch at first for kids to eat?" Because three kids and four grandchildren, I've spent many, many days in the lunchroom, and I see what's eaten, and I see what gets thrown away, and I see what happens. Kids are so excited that they wait till the last few minutes, and then they're trying to scarf down what they can scarf down. You know, but everything I've heard, everything I've eaten, has been great, and I thank you so much. And, you know, I'd like to take a second to address a few of the things that I've heard. You know, growing up, I wasn't in a poverty-stricken home, but my mother didn't work, and I wasn't one that had a free lunch. But because my mom didn't work, there were many things I couldn't ask for and didn't ask for. And when my three children grew up, I said, "You know, I didn't want them to be that way." So I did it so well that now they don't mind asking for anything. And I make a joke about that, but my parents were right, and it was okay that there are some things, because life's not fair, and this is my opinion only. But I just feel like sometimes we, as parents, have to just understand there's some things our kids can have and some things our kids can't have, and we have to be the governors of that, not expect the school to do that. But, and, you know, there's just many things I took notes down with, with hearing some of the things. I felt, I feel the same way with some of the fundraisers that we do with PTA. I feel like, you know, some kids' parents can sell more products than other kids in order to get a free bouncy ball if you sell seven items. Well, I never was able to do that, because I didn't work in a situation that I had lots of parents I could sell to. So I think there's all kinds of different ways we can look at the way our school systems do things, but we can't be perfect in every single step. But I think we see all the things that this program has achieved in just two years. And we see all the horrible things that happened to our lunch program. No disrespect to any lunch aide, any lunch lady, or any lunch person, because they did the best they could do with the guidelines that they had. Those are my thoughts. They're my thoughts alone, nobody has to agree with me. I mean, no disrespect to anybody, but I personally appreciate what we've done. I think it's a good way, I think it's a good track, and I just think that there's some things that we, as parents, have to make decisions on if we don't want our kids to have them.
I have several questions. And first of all, I'm glad to hear you say that you're happy to meet with parents, because I think that's part of what the problem has been, is that a lot of the decisions were made without any parental or community involvement, and, and parents didn't have an opportunity to really have any input. And I think what we see here tonight, although I don't mean to totally disagree, I, I, I'll be honest, I haven't tasted the food. Spaghetti taco doesn't sound really delicious to me, but that's okay. Sounds very high carb, but I'm sure it is delicious. And I've heard the food is good from those I've talked to, so. But not everybody is happy, because obviously 10 people this evening talked about nutrition, so not everyone is happy. And I'm gonna guess there's others besides those parents. So I think I want to acknowledge that there is concern, and it's not just one school. And I do have a couple of questions. So I'm new to the board, so I don't know, who was involved in making the decision to make the change? So it was the board and?
It was the administration, looking at the financial situation, seeing what the situation was gonna be.
Was there any conversation with people in the community or parents? Was there any stakeholders?
I don't remember exactly who was on the evaluation committee. That's an Angie question, but I mean, it was talking to people within our school nutrition group. And, and exactly, third party, I can't tell you exactly. Typically, I do have third parties on it, but it was discussions.
Interrupt, that this was on our agenda several times, or anybody who wanted to make comments or have input as to what was going on with this process.
Yes, ma'am, it was.
I understand that. I'm just saying that sometimes I think, and I think that is a way for people to get involved and come to a meeting and make comments, but I also think sometimes it's helpful to reach out to the community, to get community input into things, and not just wait for them to show up at a meeting to talk about it. That's my opinion. Another question I have, and I guess this is the big question. What would happen? If, well, actually, let me go to the first question. Do we know, do we have a breakdown? I know you gave me some numbers, I really appreciate you putting those together and putting the slides, and this has been really helpful information. Do we know how much of the à la carte sales is actually the Smart Snacks? The snacks that the parent showed us earlier?
So let's define it as, even though I don't agree.
Because, because also, à la carte could be, à la carte could be, we don't serve this anymore, but I used to go buy Asian chicken, because I love the Asian chicken. And so that's an à la carte, because I would go down and just buy Asian chicken. But that's not a Smart Snack, that was just an à la carte item. So if students go back and get a second of a sandwich, an extra hamburger, or extra slice of pizza, that's, I'm talking about strictly the snacks.
Yeah, so we're talking about the chips.
Ice cream, chips.
Like the lady that presented the drinks.
Yes, all of that.
You know, without going through each individual item, because it, and it's up to the cashier who hits the right button, okay? But going through the numbers, I would estimate that, that of, so you've got the 305,000 plus the 102, which was the, the, the ice cream. So you got 402,000 would be your maximum population for discussion, the rest was the reimbursement. Then of that number, I would say approximately 55% to 60%, around 250,000 would be what I would call, I think is what, you know, the general public's defining as a snack or a junk food.
What would happen, hypothetical? If we were to remove the Smart Snacks, not just, say, no competitive foods whatsoever, but say, no Smart Snacks, no, none of those types of items that were just presented. If we were to remove those from the elementary school, what would that effect, would that have on our budget?
Well, your majority of your Smart Snacks are in the secondary schools.
Yeah, they're not in elementary.
So elementary, you're probably looking at, you know, probably about 100 and a quarter to 150, rough.
Can we, because I don't know this answer. What Smart Snacks are in elementary versus middle versus high school? Do y'all know that?
Sarah, I'm gonna let you answer that.
Yeah, because I'm not sure.
I haven't seen any.
There, there's different regulations for each grade level. Primarily, your snacks is your chips and your cocoa cherry bars. Any of the food components, those maintain the same across the board, as far as what you're allowed to serve. The beverages are what restricted as you hit elementary, middle, then high school. However, typically, in our elementary schools, you see less variety. I know at some of our elementary schools, we'll have one type of bagged chip, string cheese, yogurt, that may be the cocoa cherry bar, which is a commodity item that we are utilizing up this year, and we have not reordered it for next year at this point. But that's a smaller amount, but it's the same items we can serve. When you hit your middle school and your high school levels, you may see six types of chips, instead of just that one for the day that we rotate through. But the snacks itself, those regulations maintain, except for beverages.
Um, okay. The ice cream numbers, why is there, why was, why were the ice cream numbers so high?
I think what it is is.
Because it's ice cream.
And I think it's the fact that TNG brought in so much of a different variety. You know, one of the things that we promoted, right or wrong, was using commodity dollars to do the ZZ Bar. As you heard Sarah say, that's not something that, that I don't think is a good use of commodity dollars. It's not where I get my biggest bang from my bucks. There's a better way to use that from an efficiency standpoint. So we're using that up this year. We won't be bringing it back next year, just because it's something that's so high in calories, and it is a very expensive item for us to, to produce. Now, back to your question. So if you had 150,000, let's just say 150,000 for the sake of discussion. And as a board and as a superintendent, when we renew the contract, you have the right to negotiate certain terms. You have to, you don't have to go back through the RFP process. But they have $155,000 guarantee. If, let's just say, because I don't, I'm going brain-dead here, so.
Sorry.
So let's say it's 50 cents is our cost on a dollar. So, you know, there's $75,000 of cost, so then, in essence, we're making $75,000 of profit. I think, and I'm speaking on TNG's behalf, I don't mean to, but I think you would see them want to reduce the guarantee by at least $75,000. I mean, that's what I would do if I was in their shoes. Now, understand, they may go up, you know, if we go to begin having conversations about the guarantee, because they've seen what we've done. We're, you know, they projected $4.5 million in revenues for this year. You saw in the last six years, the highest we gave was 3.9. They're on track to exceed it. The bulk of that has been in their reimbursable meals. So they may, you know, if we start having a conversation about negotiations, they're gonna have to put all that into the equation. But at a worst-case scenario, I think it's a reduction of the guarantee by $75,000.
I guess what I, I hear, I think it would be worth exploring somehow to come to a, an agreement, a compromise to some degree of, at least in the elementary schools. And the ice cream, I don't know, it sounds like it's not all schools, and it's, some schools it's more often than others. And it sounds like we also need to push more about getting reimbursable lunches. And if we, and maybe there is a way, if there could be a stakeholder committee, as was suggested, that can get together and come up with some ideas on how, not only to reduce the Smart Snacks, but how we can increase. And parents are the ones who are going to be buying school lunches. If we can get parents involved in trying to increase the number of school lunches sold, that's helpful for us, right? To get more lunches sold, you know? And inviting people in the community to come test the lunches. I know parents can go when they want to, but if you made it into something more than that. I, I'm just trying to think of, it would be nice to have, find a balance between all of this, instead of just saying, "Well, it is what it is, and you know what? You gotta manage your kids better, and it's your children, and you need to be a parent, and, and that's life." And I feel like that, I don't feel comfortable with that solution.
And I understand what you're saying, but the reason why we got to the third party was the losses that, as a district, we had suffered.
Oh, and I'm not saying having a third, I'm, I have nothing against having a third party. I'm just trying to find a balance here of how.
Right.
It sounds like maybe parents meeting with TNG and coming up with ideas for, maybe there's different kinds of snacks, there's a solution, a better solution, a better, better snacks that can be offered at the elementary school level that fit both sides. Bill, I, I just feel, I don't feel comfortable just saying that's the way it is.
Can I ask a question? Do we only serve ice cream one day a week?
No, wait, say that again.
Do we only sell ice cream one day a week?
Most schools sell it every day, but it's one grade per day. The majority of schools.
So first grade can only have it once a week. So it's only once a week? So it's only once a week for each grade?
Because it's per grade.
Once a week for a first grader, once a week.
Correct.
Thank you.
Now, CEP, that got mentioned. So I'm very familiar with CEP because in Richmond, the whole district was CEP. The CEP is set up based off of your direct certifications. If you're not achieving over 50% direct search, you economically can't make the numbers work.
Is that as a school system, you mean?
Yep, and we did it for the entire system.
That's right.
We do not, as a district, come close to that. We do look at it every single year. We looked hard at one particular strand in this district of trying to go CEP, which would have been great for us. It does work fantastically, but we can't make the numbers work, and the state has agreed with us. They just, we don't have enough yet to do that.
Ms. Graham, you're welcome.
Yes. So first, I would like to say thank you to TNG for what you have done for our students and our teachers. I continually hear, especially from elementary principals, about how much our students are loving the extra vegetables and fruit, to the point where you even, for some sweet young lady, separated out the tomatoes and cucumbers because she had an aversion to that combination. The participation rate, not just among our students, but among our teachers for eating lunch, has just skyrocketed. And I think that's great, you know, for them not to have to pack their lunch the night before, just like the parent was saying about their students. You know, it's the same for a teacher, you know? They have very little time of their own at home in the evenings. So I'm very appreciative for that, especially the free and reduced lunch students, because while they would get a meal, they didn't always eat what was in that meal. And now we're seeing a much bigger difference in that. And we all know that a full belly means a good brain to work during the day. I also would like to say that for me, removing the à la carte, I think is a big misunderstanding. And I think that would remove our extra entrees. That hurts our athletes who need those extra entrees and extra milk, as well as, you know, just our students who may not get dinner that night, you know? We didn't have, I grew up in poverty, and I know what it's like not to have a meal on the weekends or for dinner. And sometimes they overeat during the day because they know they're not getting anything that evening. And for that, I'm thankful for the fruits and vegetables that you give at no charge because I think, you know, they'll see that they can fill up on those things and that's good and healthy for them. What else was I gonna say? I am very disturbed that TNG has gotten a bad rap on this because nothing has changed except adding the variety of ice cream. But what has changed is that you're cooking foods from scratch, so we're reducing the preservatives our children are getting. They're eating more of the foods on their plates and their trays, and we're certainly, like I said, seeing the participation rate grow up, go up tremendously. So, you know, we would have kept our nutrition program, but I'll be honest, when we made the changes, when the changes were made at the federal level, that made it so difficult for us to buy what was required, and then the kids wouldn't eat it, we really got in a really bad cycle. And TNG has helped us with that because they can buy in bulk. They know, they have recipes they can do that are from scratch, that still meet the standards, but provide our kids something they want to eat. And that is huge. And I thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Graham.
And so I can just echo what other board members have said about the way you all have turned things around for our, for our children. We had a wonderful staff, but with the regulations and all the demands that were put on our folks to be able to produce meals that children would eat, it was not happening. Meals that adults would eat, because I went to those schools and ate some of those meals, and that one item that you could put all of your fat and all of your sodium into, that's what I ate, and I was not gonna eat that corn that came straight out of the can, or those green beans that came straight out of the can with no butter, no nothing on them. And just like the kids, it stayed on that tray. So now our students are eating. The food that I have tasted, that you all have bought into us, is absolutely wonderful. There's some things that are still, you know, but they're within the guidelines and what you all have to produce. I absolutely believe that it is, as a parent, part of my responsibility to make sure my child is doing what I need them to do or don't need them to do, as far as their choices. When the board was able to meet with you all before the decision was made, I pushed you all very hard because we're, we were bringing in another business into our community, and I wanted to make sure they were gonna be good to our community and to our employees. So to hear you all stand and say, we would be more than happy to meet with folks, we'd be more than happy to talk with folks, that's exactly the type of business that I wanted to make sure we were bringing into Montgomery County. So I truly appreciate what you all have done and are still willing to do for our community. And as Ms. Graham said, the bad rap that has come out of a good thing, it is very disappointing, very disappointing to me. There was a lot of thought, a lot of money that we were looking at as a district that was gonna be coming out and had come out of our general budget to be able to support everything else we need to do as far as educating our students. For me, it was a, I was just like, oh, here we go, here we go, no, 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 don't want to do this, don't want to turn over, turn over part of our operations to someone else. But it was absolutely the right thing to do. And I am so glad that we chose you all because at this point, at this point, you all have done nothing but wonderful things for our community. And I thank you for that, and I hope we will continue this partnership. And from what you said tonight, you're more than willing to work with our community to see how we can do things, adjust things, and make things a little better. So thank you.
Ms. Graham?
Yeah, I wanted to add one more thing. One more thing that I felt, I thought, very disturbing in one of the emails that I got. And maybe it's just because you don't know the lengths that we go to, to increase enrollment in our free and reduced lunch. Other than stand on our heads, we have done everything under the sun to get families to sign up for it. But as the old saying goes, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. And we have tried all kinds of tricks and, and things to make them sign up. A lot of it's pride, a lot of it's stereotypical. Some of them don't realize it's mostly anonymous. I mean, really, you know, the lunch ladies, and I, you know, they don't, they don't really, you know, single kids out for that. They're probably the only ones who know. You know, it's certainly not the teacher, not the, you know, principal, not any of those, because it's not, that's not what it's about. It's about having a meal for those kids so that their brain can work during the day. So, you know, certainly, we're open to hearing other ideas on increasing the enrollment, but I'd be surprised if we haven't already tried it all, to be honest. And I was very hurt that that was one of the things in there that makes it sound like our staff is not doing their job.
Now, that was the one item that I did hear tonight. If there is anything that we are doing that puts a child in a situation where they are identified as getting free or reduced lunch, then many years ago, that was supposed to have gone away.
Explain, what do you know about that?
So the general public, we are only allowed to share free and reduced with those that need to know. It doesn't mean everybody in the district.
Right.
It is only available to those that need to know, and that's governed by federal law. So I did also hear, I think, what you're referring to. But the information on students are governed, obviously, by privacy laws, and those cannot be shared other than with those individuals that specifically need to know. And the general public does not fall in that category.
So we don't have any tickets?
All school employees don't fall in that category. Ma'am, we do not, we do not identify.
We don't have a ticket.
I think that, I think what the, the young lady was, was trying to say in that case was, say I'm free, and I come up, and, you know, generally, this isn't true all the time, but, you know, a lot of times, a free child doesn't have money in their account because they're, they would get their lunch for free. And so if I get denied, and the lunchroom lady's gonna be polite, gonna be courteous, but what does the, what does the front, my buddies that are behind me think if I get turned away?
Right.
That, that I think was the analogy that they were trying to say.
And if I made, the comments I made, my three grandchildren in Montgomery County public schools are in free and reduced lunch. So I made those comments knowing that that is my kids. So the things that I shared and said, it's not something that my, my children don't deal with, because they do.
I am, I... Ms. Cass, let's give Ms. Parton and Mr. Chabaka a turn, and then we'll get back to you.
Does Mark want to go first, or does it?
Mr. Chabaka, would you like to go next?
Sure, I'll go ahead and speak. So I think there's general agreement among all of the board members, and I think probably most of the speakers and the public, that I think in general, we are happy with the nutrition group. I don't, I did not take away any messaging about that, that it was negative about the nutrition group in particular. I mean, I think Tommy said it well. I mean, I was gonna make this point, but I'll make it again because I think it's important to make, that, that one of the advantages, when we were brought, the decision last year, that one of the things that really struck all of us, I think, and certainly struck me, was that fact that the nutrition group was big enough to do the job and, and do the marketing and recipes and things like that, that were needed to increase both the participation in the lunch and breakfast, while at the same time, being really willing to work with us. And I'm really glad to see, to see that on display tonight too, from Jessica and Sarah. So I really appreciate that. But it is, I think, you know, last year, we, we did this, we kinda had three years of declining revenues. We were about to go into the, into the red. It was kind of something, you know, we almost had an emergency situation to some degree on our hands. And, and I think what I'm hearing from, from a lot of the parents is, and what I'm personally feeling, by the way, and this is how I felt last year, and it's been a year now, is that, you know, partnering with the nutrition group gives us an opportunity to be innovative, to tailor things the way that we want to in the future. And, and I think that how we do that, I, I'm a little bit reluctant to just come out and say, this is the way we're gonna do it. Now, to the parents that are concerned and that spoke tonight, you know, I just want to say, thank you so much for, you know, so many of you have volunteer positions and you're doing all this extra stuff for activism, and you care, and I'm really impressed with the research that you've done, the time you've spent on this, your concern for not just your kids, but other kids too. I really appreciate what you guys are doing. You are definitely not my adversary, and I don't think the adversary of the school. You guys are why we're here, your kids are why we're here. I think definitely, we all want to do what's best, and our job as a board is, is to educate. And I do think that that extends to nutrition. And, but I do want to say that there's also kind of a catch 22, if you will, because as a school board, we also serve at, really, the will of the public. We, we serve to basically bring the public input onto these decisions. And, and, you know, while I, I fully believe and accept the things that the parents tonight have said, it's, it's possible that there's, there's parents in other parts of the county that maybe don't want to get rid of it all, or don't, you know, maybe even within your own schools, there might be parents that say, well, well, let's reduce this, let's cut out the smart snacks, or let's, you know? So I am, I am reluctant to step in as a board and say, and decree, this is how we're gonna do it, or this is how we should do it. But I, I do agree with Sue, and I, and with some of the other board members that have also alluded to this, that, you know, I do think that it's, it's time to, and I don't know, Tommy, maybe you can set me straight on this, but it sounds like whatever we're gonna move forward with for the next year, as far as renewing, is gonna have to be submitted in less than a month. Is that correct?
Correct.
That's great.
So, so, you know, once again, we find ourselves kind of in a situation where there's a time, kind of a short time factor here. So, but having said that, I, I do, you know, I do support having some more parent participation, and it doesn't have to be a big committee, it can be a few people, it can be, you know, however we want to do that. But, you know, the ask that I kept hearing tonight from the parents, you know, nobody was saying, you know, some of the stuff that was replied to, I don't think those are the points that the parents were making. The two things that kept coming up was basically to have a seat at the table, which sounds to me like stakeholder input. You know, they want some input in all of this, and I think that the nutrition group welcomes that. I think hopefully, the board will welcome that. And then the other thing was, you know, that there are kind of these, you know, I heard different levels of asks on, you know, can we, let's eliminate competitive foods completely, let's just eliminate, you know, some of the worst offenders. And I, and I do think that that's something that, that's worth looking into. In, in some of my talks with Tommy, I also realize that, you know, part of increasing participation, you know, having some of those quote unquote, maybe fun snack foods, smart snacks, that does also, you know, I guess, in theory anyway, it's supposed to help with the participation. But I also hear, what I'm hearing tonight from our community is that in a lot of cases, that's actually maybe hurting participation. So I do think we need to get input from, from our community on this, and I do think that there's room to take some steps to make some adjustments, and I'd like to see that.
Thanks, Mr. Chabaka. Ms. Part?
Hey, I am not gonna take long. I know everybody's tired, and I'm just gonna basically echo pretty much what everybody else has said. Thank you guys so much. I was actually one of the ones that got to taste test you while we were trying to make the decision when we were at our conference. It was a hard decision. There was a lot of people out there, but because of what you do and what you could provide, we chose you. I think we made the right decision, hands down. I have a daughter who would not eat school lunch, would not eat it. Nothing tastes good, Mom. Ms. Bond and I were reminiscing not too long ago. You know, back when we went to school, we didn't have those regulations. We went into the school lunchroom, and the food was good to eat, probably wasn't the healthiest, but, you know, there was no restrictions back then. It was good. Just about everybody in my school at the time was eating lunch. We still had those on the restricted lunch or the low-income lunch. Never really had a problem with anybody knowing. I'm pretty sure, from what I've heard, I think that that's still good, that we don't have an issue with that. So thank you, thank you for willing to meet with us again and talk. Thank you for willing to meet with the public, with the parents, whoever would want to talk. I appreciate you guys so much. My daughter eats at school now. She brags about it every day. Jamie and I have actually gone and eaten. There's not one thing that we have not liked, that I know of, that I've heard. I've heard from several different children and parents, positive, more positive than, than anything negative. I understand your all's concerns, I do as a parent. I'd like to think that this could be solved. I know it's kind of a double-edged sword because not one shoe fits every foot. Um, I know it's kind of a double-edged sword, um, because not one shoe fits every foot. With as many people that are concerned about it, you have as many people or more that are happy with it. So, to think that we're gonna make everyone 100% happy is probably a little unrealistic. But at the same time, I have to say that I have more of a concern of our deficit, and what might happen if we didn't get this problem fixed. So, it seems like that that part has been taken care of, and it seems to be working. Is it perfected? You know, there's always room for us to, to get better with things, and learn things, and so, but, you know, as far as getting our money and dollars up where it needs to be, so we're not having to worry about how we're gonna come up with, where's this money coming from? Because it's money that we have to use other places, because we've got so many more things that we need to fund. Um, that's just one less load off of our mind. Um, I want, I thank you ladies for coming and speaking tonight. It sounds like you have done a lot of research. I, I do appreciate you coming. Um, I hope that, you know, if you do feel like you want to meet and discuss, I hope that's something that you all can do with our group, or, or with us. Um, I'm open to hear any suggestions. Um, I do want to echo on Ms. Graham's comment on, uh, some of our students who don't get to eat, and are athletes who need more food. Having a daughter in many athle- athletics sports, um, one thing she used to tell me was that she was starving, I mean, when I would pick her up, she was starving, because there was nothing, nothing more, or nothing she was able to purchase to eat. Um, I do know that when you're about anywhere from elementary to high school, your metabolism is a little different than what ours is. Um, you know, uh, I don't, um, you know, are, are our children as active now as we need them to be, or as we were? No. Um, we're working on that, too. But, I don't really, uh, I, I think that there's more positives to having what we have than negatives, personally. Um, should we make some better choices at what we offer? Maybe. Um, I don't see anything wrong with what we're offering, if they're meeting the guidelines. Um, I do have to echo on Ms. Franklin's comment about being able to have authority over what your child purchases, or what they can't. I do know that we do have guidelines in place, that I know several parents I know use, and basically, it's put to the children, you know, like I tell my own, this person might be able to do it, I'm not their mother, I'm your mother, this is, this is what you're gonna do. So, um, you, you, you can't do that, you can't have that. So, I'm glad that we do have that there, for parents to be able to have some control over that. So, um, I'm just gonna stop there, because I know it's-
Thank you.
We've been on this way too long, but, but I just, again, I wanna thank you guys for everything. I wanna thank you ladies for coming, and voicing, uh, your concerns. And I do believe, I do remember several meetings that we did have, um, options, and it was on our agenda, for people to come and speak, and about what they'd like to see, what they'd want. Um, so I know, I feel like, that's been one of my biggest pet peeves. I'm the second newest to the board, I guess, from Sue. Um, haven't served a full term yet, but I'm getting there, um, learning a lot. But I, I would like to think that we're getting better with our communication, and that, I know, and I think I can speak for my fellow board members, that I feel like we're reaching out into our community more, trying to get opinions, ideas, and concerns, than we probably ever have. And we're putting information out there more, on social media and everything, for people to be able to see, and, and acknowledge what's going on, and invite them to come and give us your thoughts on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parton. I know, Ms. Cass, you had something else to share, before I got my turn.
No, go ahead, that's all right. Yeah, go ahead, you finish up.
Uh, I, I'm, I feel like I'm kinda the bad guy here, so, um, I, TNG, I have nothing against you at all, I've never said anything, and I'm, I feel like there is a sense that I'm attacking the group, and I have no reason to do that whatsoever. Um, uh, so that, that is not my, was my, never my point, was to do that. My point was to make sure we acknowledge the parents. And I think that we're not doing a very good job of that. And I think that they came here to present something they were very concerned about, and instead, all we've done is told TNG how thankful we are for them. And I think they've done a good job, but I think we're not acknowledging that we have parents that aren't happy. And I think that that is something that we, we need to continue to address, on more than just nutrition, on other areas, too. We have stakeholders, our parents, our teachers, our students. And those are the people, our students ultimately are the most important, but those are the people who are on the front line, dealing with students every day, teachers and parents, and they should be involved in decisions that are made by our board on, on these types of things. And that, that's really how I feel. And I, I, I thank you all for coming this evening. Um, I thank you guys for coming and sharing the information that you shared, um, this is all new for me. Um, Tommy, you, you do a great job putting all that stuff together. Um, but I think we need to, to make sure that we acknowledge everybody in our community, and I'm, I'm not so sure we're doing a great job at that. And I don't think we did a good job at that tonight. I think we thanked all of them, and other than Dana, we didn't thank the parents.
Well, I, I'm not done yet.
I believe I did.
And I think Mr. Chabaka thanked already, so.
Mark did, too. Thank you.
And, and I wanna say, and I wanna say one other thing, if we're gonna keep having a conversation, I'll let you go ahead and speak, but if you're wanting to just speak last, then, then I do have one other thing I'd like to say.
You go ahead, I'm, I'm waiting, I'm patient.
Okay. Um, so, uh, so on the issue of money, 'cause that came up, and I forgot to mention this, um, there is, this is kind of a moving target, and I, and I do think it's an ongoing process, like Tommy said, about raising, um, raising our participation. I think that if we're successful in raising our participation, it will give us a lot more opportunities to do better things in the future. But, you know, in some of the conversations I've had with, with parents, the, the idea of this, this thing, this, this money issue keeps coming up. And I just wanna say that, to some degree, I, I am okay, like, like Ms. Cass said, in some situations, I would probably be okay pumping some money into, uh, our program, rather than, than doing things that, that we don't wanna do to the kids. And, you know, Mr. Two, Greg Two, sent us an email, um, uh, pointing out the amount of, let's see, I, I don't have the slide numbers here, but on the first big chart, I think, or the second big chart, where's, where is it? It had the, uh, the amount of money in à la carte per school, and I think if you do the, if you did the math, maybe it was the last chart, if you do the math on some of those, it comes out to $30, $40 per student, and we know not all the students are, uh, are going in, and then are, are participating. And then I look at, you know, like Ms. Cass, I look at that ice cream number, and, you know, another thing that Mr. Two said, is he said it was irresponsible to tempt students. I mean, I appreciate what, um, what Jessica said, and, and I believe her, and I also believe that we, as school board, are not trying to, you know, balance the nutrition budget on the backs of students. But what we say we're doing, and then what we actually do, could end up being two different things, if we don't get the proper, uh, input on, on this. And I look at that ice cream line, where we went from, you know, where we increased ice cream sales by $92,000, you know? I mean, I think it's more than irresponsible to tempt students with unhealthy food. I think there's a, a question of morality on that, too. So, um, as far as I'm concerned, you know, if we're short by $100,000, or if it takes $100,000 or $200,000 to go from one type of nutrition program to a different type of nutrition program, I, for one, would be willing to spend the money on that. But, I don't know what those answers are, and I think it will be a process to get there, but, but we do need to go through it. Thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
I'm gonna give you one more second. Um, I was just gonna say, um, you know, one thing that Dana, Ms. Parton, called to attention, we had reminiscing, one of the questions I always ask after we adopted the nutrition program, and it did not work. It didn't work. I mean, that's the thing, that I, I'm listening, and, and it's, no matter who we're thinking of, coming, it, that's not about that. What we were doing didn't work. And it's proven, we have the data to show it. But, help, I, I've always asked, I'd like for somebody to help me understand how, come back in the day, we had no regulations on lunches at all, and we had half the obesity problem that we have now. So, that tells me that it really doesn't stem from school lunches. That's the whole big picture that I've been trying to say. This is not something that's stemming from school lunches. If it did, there would've been a more obesity problem a long time ago, and there wasn't. This is something that has become a future thing. So, you know, we've got to put blame where blame is. And, and, and like I said, it's not about, I appreciate you guys coming out, but as we have, aboard have always said, there's many people that can always come out, and we have to listen to their voices as well. So, knowing justice meant, but it, it's a bigger picture than just what we're talking about here. That's it, go ahead.
Thank you. Well, it's my turn, I know. I've been, I've been good and patient. Well, um, obviously, I always appreciate parents coming out, so I'm always thankful to public, um, public address part, actually wish we have more, because we make so many decisions, and we really don't have that much input. So, I will, you know, I will, um, I hope you will continue to come for all sorts of other topics that we discuss. Uh, but I gotta apologize also for Bad Rap with TNG, and also, I felt personally very hurtful in a couple of the emails, not every once, uh, that, you know, we're feeding our kids with bad food, we're feeding our kids with junk food, uh, we have to stop competitive foods, uh, you know, we're making money because we now contract to TNG. Uh, those things are hurtful, and those things were not right. So, if we're gonna really, um, support our kids, and support our program, and support the schools in general, I think we have to tell the, you know, truth, maybe some of it because we didn't know, um, you know, and so I'm not blaming anybody, but, you know, when you look at the definition of competitive foods, if we cut them all out, the teachers cannot eat lunch, kids cannot have second Andre, you can't bring the birthday cakes, and, um, you can't have the box salad. And then, yes, there are à la carte items, and under à la carte items, there are some snacks that may not be, um, desirable. But we have to be careful what we put the umbrella and, uh, ask, but, you know, as a, as what we wanna cut. Uh, another thing that I would like us to look into, and if there is somewhere that information, I apologize, but I think, uh, a couple of the parents that I got in touch were, um, were happy with the lunches that is served, and their, their kids were eating, but in the same time, when they're going through the snack line, they see those, um, smart snacks, but, uh, they can pick and choose the lunch item, because they know the menu, what is inside. So, if they have the allergies, they can tell their kids that they don't eat that lunch, and pack the lunch for them. So, that is a concern when it comes to, uh, snacks. So, I think that was a concern, that one of the students got the gum, that shouldn't be having gum, but the kindergartner, or the other student had something that was, you know, shouldn't have, but he's a little older, so he actually used the judgment, and didn't, didn't get it. So, maybe we can provide nutritional facts and ingredient list of those smart snacks that, that the parents can decide what their kids can have, like the lunch, the menu they choose. And I think, you know, to wrap it up, my, my, um, idea is at this time, because I'm also sitting in the strategic planning committee, and we're about to see all five items, and which one includes, you know, equity, poverty, mental health, and with that, there's gonna be a lot of wellness and, uh, health, you know, questions and action plans gonna come out. So, and, and knowing that wellness policy is due, you know, June 30, 2020, you know, what I would say is, let's involve, you know, parents and stakeholders. And I know we have school health advisory board that meets periodically, I don't know how often, off the top of my head, but they didn't meet in November, I think they might be meeting again. So, let's involve the parents and continue the conversation, what we can do, uh, in the, in the years to come. And I think it is still a little early to judge on how we're doing, or how we're not doing, in terms of the profit with, um, TNG. Obviously, we're on a good track, and they're doing a great job, and I really enjoy the lunch, including the spaghetti sandwich. And, yeah, that was high carb, but it was tasty. And, um, so, you know, we, we should have a little more, I think, chance to test the waters, what works and what, I mean, we, just looking at, not in less than a year numbers, we are making product, projection, uh, of, of our future, in terms of, uh, you know, sustainability of the nutrition program, and not dipping in, um, the operation fund. So, I thank everyone coming, I thank you guys all being here, and I thank Tommy 100 million times, because he has been working for each and every one's, I think, zillion million questions, and, uh, trying to figure out all the answers. But I think that will be, that will be my suggestion moving forward. Let the parents involve, and let's see, you know, when we devise the wellness policy, the new one, uh, you know, we'll work on the details as we move forward. So, that will be my-
Okay, so I still have a couple of comments and a question. So, I have always encouraged parents to come, and the community to come and speak-
Absolutely.
-in front of this board. That's where I started, voicing my opinion, was at public address. I was the board member who pushed to have our policy revisited, to make sure that we were giving every minute possible for our public, our community, our constituents, to be able to address this board. So, I take some exception with saying that, not respecting folks for coming and being a part of the process. So, my question is, um, so is there a way, because we have folks who make wonderful donations to our system, for, um, donations to be made, so that our students who aren't, are on free and reduced lunch, to be able to possibly buy that ice cream one time a week?
Yes, ma'am.
And how do we make that happen?
Um, it's kinda just getting the word out to the organizations. We have, uh, individuals and organizations today, uh, because there's a, you don't wanna shame a student who doesn't have money for their lunch. Um, we started that two years ago. Um, we reimbursed school nutrition about $11,000. Last year was about $18,000. Um, this year, we're running about $21,000. Um, school nutrition does a great job trying to collect on their funds, as well as getting families to get, uh, to fill out the applications and become proper on their, on their eligibility, and take the maximum benefit on their things. I think it's just getting word of mouth out there, that, uh, we would, we would appreciate assistance in setting up accounts that children can use to buy those à la carte related items.
We just make, need to make sure we inform the parents, because there might be some that don't want their children to have ice cream.
Yeah, and, and, you know, as one of the board members said, we right now, it's, you know, it's different on an allergy, for reimbursement, we have to have a medical note. Um, on an à la carte related item, if a parent says, I don't want my child to buy X, um, we can gladly put that in the system, when they punch in their point-of-sale, uh, PIN number, that tells us as the cashier, you know, Tommy can't have an ice cream, and, and we don't allow him to take an ice cream.
And for regular, you know, any other allergies, the cafeteria ladies, or the computer, they know that, all right?
If we did a medical note, because what the law says is, we, we're not medical professionals, and so we can't make that medical judgment. What the medical side has to do is tell us what the allergy is, as well as what the replacement items are, and then we have to make them, that child a reimbursable meal, with all of the components that fit exactly what the doctor says, that that child's eligible to have.
So, I think, as a wrapping up, I see the, probably here, the consensus that we will continue as is.
Do you need a motion for that? I'll make a motion for us to leave things as are, if that's what you need.
You can go, go for it, but I, you know, wanna add to that, we will involve the parents as moving forward, when we have the new wellness, um, policy.
Yeah, I think my, my understanding from what you said, Gune, and it sounded to me like we had at least four, if not more, uh, members that did wanna include, um, the parents going forward. Now, maybe, maybe there's no time, I think from a logistical point of view, I don't think we have time.
I, I don't think there's objection to, there is, I don't feel the objection, parent involvement. I think the objection is cutting the smart snacks right now, as tomorrow. Am I right?
Okay.
We don't wanna change anything, but we want parents to participate in the future conversations of what we sell, or what, what is written in the wellness policy. or what, what is written in the wellness policy. Um, so they will be the part of the health, uh, school health advisory board with the teachers and staff and administration.
Well, and I think Mr. Krantz already said that one of the problems was the Z-bomb. We're not using that again. So, there's one thing that's been changed.
One thing is already down. And ice cream is less frequent, I think.
So.
Okay. So, what I think I heard was that the contract is up for renewal.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
And that this is the point where we need to have the conversations about what we want to tweak with that.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am.
And where the involvement would be as, with the community to say, how do we work through this? So, I don't know, do we need a motion to do anything this evening other than, you know, say, this is what we want as a board to have this conversation? And then, we renew their contract when you bring it to us as to how it's.
Well, I think we gotta remember, this, this is not an RFP process.
Right. Yeah.
I mean, this is.
Just a renewal.
It's a renewal.
Right, just a renewal.
I mean, three years, it'll be a, it'll be an actual RFP process. We'll have a committee and that kinda thing. Uh, I'm just, what I'm hearing is, um, you know, w- we do have, uh, the nutrition committee that can meet as we're moving forward.
Yeah.
Uh, but I, but I don't, you know, foresee us doing anything prior to, in terms of the timetable.
Right.
Or, you know, in terms of moving forward with the nutrition group as is, but then having conversations as to how things can be tweaked, you know?
Right. Yeah. So, but we have.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, too. I, I would wanna make sure, um, that as we have those conversations, you know, could we, could we pilot some things here and there, um, as far as, you know, possibly eliminating certain things? I mean, I could see a situation where, you know, for, for some of the parents that spoke tonight, I could see a situation where, okay, if we, you know, I think some parents are confused about, you know, the, the breadth of what encompasses competitive foods. But let's say, okay, these chips and these sweet things are gonna be taken off the menu at this elementary school for, you know, because the PTA asked for it for a certain amount of time. And we'll see if those parents will start sending their kids back to lunch. We might see an increase in lunch participation, which is the holy grail, right, Tommy?
You're correct.
No.
So, I.
So, would, would, would that still, we, would, would we still have the ability to do that if we went forward with the contract renewal as is on April 1st? Is there enough flexibility to do something like that?
It depends on what you're talking about doing.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you'd have to look at the dollars and cents.
Right.
And properly evaluate.
Do y'all wanna answer any of that, those questions there? Is the, what flexibility, after we sign the contract with you all, what will be the flexibility through this year?
Through the rest of this year, I mean, we could pilot a few different things and then look at the, um, results of, of those pilots. But however, we could also present several different scenarios to the board for next year on, okay, if we would eliminate these snacks at these elementary schools, what would be the cause and the effect of that?
Right.
And how we could work through that with, with all of you, so.
Well, my, my thinking was, you know, because the time is short, let's go and approve the, you know, I mean, we have, have the consensus to go with the contract already. But then, you know, move on with the, what else we can change and look into the years to come. I mean, we're gonna have next year.
That's what he said.
Pull up to, to the mic, sir. That's okay, 'cause, yeah, that's all right.
Sorry, Joe.
Just so everybody can help here. I think another important piece that we can focus on is we can get the, the budget passed. Um, and then, as we go throughout the school year, we have a lot of districts that make changes as we go. After the budget has already been, now, obviously, it's up to the administration. But what would happen at that point from nutrition side is we would have a meeting with, you know, you. And we would say, okay, here are the budget variances. So, we did not do A, B, C, and this is what it looks like. If that is something you would not wanna entertain, then obviously, we would need to get you the budget as what it would look like on your decision for next year. But, I mean, variances happen. Schools closing, there, there's a lot of things that can feed that. À la carte sales, not something like this. But say, uh, principal's upset and quit selling à la carte for three weeks, that would be a budget variance. There's, there's a lot of different reasons, but I don't think that's what he wants to do.
The concern I have is that, um, the state really does not like food service management companies. And if we change it in midstream before it can be effective, the state has to adopt it. And it may not get adopted.
Yeah.
So, it's not as simple as there's only one more meeting left in March. I mean, we can try. I'm more than willing to try anything. Y'all know that. But I'm just saying, the challenge is the state, I have to get, y'all, I have to get your approval and then I have to get state approval.
But I don't, I don't think this is as deep as having to go in and talk about changes to the contracts or whatever. It's about sitting down and having a conversation about the concerns as what is on the table, so to speak, in our schools right now and how we might come to a, um, resolution to what we tweak to be able to, um, answer, uh, concerns with our community, but also be able to run the business and not have to go through the state and have them approve our, our, uh.
I agree in principle with you, but having gone through with the state on just getting to this point today, um, I think if we were to lower the guarantee from $155,000 to a lower amount, I'm just, I'm just using it as an example, I think the state would not look favorably on that.
How about if we looked at, um, moving forward, but then have discussions that would not lower the guarantee during this year?
I think you could do that.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Look at items that we think that we could steal, I mean, where it's, you wouldn't have to rush and do anything in the next three weeks, but continue what we're doing, but then have discussions with parents about, all right, what are some options, substitutes that you feel that you can steal?
That's what I, that's what I said.
Right.
That's exactly what I was saying.
That can be done.
That's what I was thinking, too.
That's what.
I just wanted to make sure I advised y'all accordingly.
So, what I'm hearing is keep doing what we're doing with the same contract with the guarantee in terms of the finances, but actually look at the products that make it, that maybe could yield that same guarantee.
Right. Look at the offerings that we're doing.
Right.
Does that, does that make sense?
Yes, sir. We can do that. That we can do.
Now, that's gonna have to be.
Now, they've already talked about.
With a group of parents and to, and to also, I mean, I think there's, long term, I think, that, that it's really at the seat of the table to affect change, not just, you know, this, at this time next year, hopefully, we've been working with those parents to where we have much broader and better buy-in and, and it's win-win for everybody the next time we go, you know, to, to do this. So, so, yes, I agree in principle, but I just wanna make sure that, you know, that we're getting that, that buy-in from, from the stakeholders.
That's part of my hope i- is also because the, these, uh, thoughts on wellness and whether it's the mental health or physical wellness, is also coming through the action plans through the strategic committee. So, I think for, you know, the, the school's greater plan for the next five years, you know, wellness is gonna play an important role. So, we can definitely look into moving forward, what we can improve.
But I think it's also important to remember that the nutrition group is not doing anything that we weren't already doing. So, uh, uh, trying to separate that contractual part with, you know, making some improvements going forward, um, for maybe reducing some of the smart snacks or swapping them out. But as far as their contract, they're doing exactly what we want them to do.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't think that needs to be part of this equation.
I agree.
That's why I.
The discussions need to be happening with the stakeholders to see what we could tweak with, you know, the nutrition group that was kind enough to offer to meet with the stakeholders. Um, but I don't see that the contract's a piece of this.
Yeah, I mean, I agree. I didn't see anything needs to be changed in the contract. Definitely not this year.
I mean, unless you start talking really serious money.
But there's a whole lot of stakeholders that don't agree with certain stakeholders.
Right.
And I think we need to keep that in consideration, too. I, I don't.
Gotta hear more.
And what will happen is if things are tweaked and folks don't like it, then we will see the numbers change.
Go pass down.
And the participation change.
We'll go down.
And one thing that TNG has said as we go into next school year, we, y'all did not see the full effect of TNG this year because of commodity dollars. We had to use those products before. You'll see a different menu next year. You're constantly tweaking.
Right.
Right.
So, we can accomplish exactly what you want.
Right.
Just understand if we get too far, we'll come back to it.
Exactly.
Because one of the wonderful things that I like to hear is that you all put out these samples and that you keep track of what it, what is and is not being eaten in the schools. So, we're not wasting stuff and we're not continuously putting things in front of people that they don't eat. But things that they are, we're taking care of them. So, I appreciate that point.
And you're introducing our students to new foods. Thank you.
A spaghetti taco.
Yeah, Brendan, am I right?
There's a motion on the table.
Okay. I wasn't sure if that.
To do what?
Because nobody.
You are keeping that motion?
I did make an motion.
I tweaked it just a little. I'd like to make sure that the wording, I, cause I was moving really quick over here and then I lost my track of thought.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
Leave the school nutrition program as it is, including the agreement with the nutrition group. Does that sound like an accurate reflection or do you need me to modify it?
Is there, is there an action that we need to take with this?
Well, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to sign the contract. It'd be a renewal. That does not require.
I, I mean, I didn't think.
But that's not on the agenda.
Right.
We're not.
So, we don't need to do anything.
But you can renew that contract, Dr. Meyer, without school board approval.
So, we can do it.
Because the contract, the RFP, allowed that to take place.
I, I didn't think we needed a motion. I just think it, the consensus has moved forward and include the stakeholders in the future. I thought that's what I was trying to, I don't understand.
I don't, I didn't, anybody that that wasn't something we wanted to happen.
So, is it okay to take, uh, miss, this part, her motion back? Okay.
She removed it.
Yeah.
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 Okay. We're all good.
We're all good. Yeah.
Okay.
I think we're good. We didn't need it. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Now, I need like five minutes, 10 minutes break.
Five minute break.
We have to stand up and, uh, and then come back for the last presentation. You're welcome.
So, um, again, thank y'all. Um, so what have we done to date? Um, our architect and facilities teams, um, after meeting with Dr. Meyer, with Dr. Graham, with Dr. Wickham, uh, and, and taking their input, developed our initial scope, initial plan. With that, we went to each individual principal of CES, CPS, and BES. And we reviewed with them the plan as we had. Um, we also reviewed with them the proposed timeline we were thinking about at that time. And at that point, set up schedule of future meetings with them and their team. Um, once we did that, we met with each school's entire faculty, presented the overall of the plan. Um, it was, it was a joint effort between MCPFs and JD from five design. So, it's a team approach. We not doing this by ourselves. The team today is the facilities team, JD from the architectural side. Gay and Neil is our main engineering firm, but we have other engineering firms that we're working with. Um, once the, we left copies of the plan, um, at each school in an easel so that both the faculty, visitors could see it and give their input. Once that was done, each school was asked to make a list of what their desires were, uh, the things that they saw that, that they wanted to improve or things they may want to remove. Um, from that, we took, listened to it, we reviewed it with them, understood what they did. And then, we put all of that together into our, our site plan. Um, based on that, uh, we worked with branch. We did a rough budget number. Uh, we worked with branch under the, you know, we're still working on the comprehensive agreement with them on the PPA, but they did a rough estimate of their numbers. Uh, from there, um, we've continued to have meetings with France, the architects, engineers, and the facility staff so that we can get our budgeted numbers in line with the bond, which that doesn't surprise us. We, we knew we'd be a little bit different. Um, so, we're doing value engineering and that process is going extremely well. And it's why we wanted to do the PPA, is that it allows the team to work through the issues together. Um, and it's worked well. And at the meetings, which we do in the professional development center at the operations group, um, you've got there, all the members of the team are represented. And the meetings can last a couple hours, um, and we go through each issue one by one, and it's worked out well. Um, we have, in the case of CES and CPS, submitted site plans. We know that the site plans aren't perfect, uh, but we wanted to get in line for approval. So, we began that. That was submitted on Monday. Um, we are working diligently to finalize the site plans on BES. Um, and we'll discuss each one of those here in, in a little bit more detail. Um, as soon as we get those finalized and we reviewed those with the principal, which by the way, we have, I, I had meetings with the principal today. And so, she got an opportunity to see the, the next phase of our plans. Um, we'll tweak it a little bit. And then, uh, as you'll see, once we do some of our steps that we need to do, we'll be submitting that to the, to the county for the site. So, this right here is Christiansburg Elementary. So, when we looked, took a step back and said, okay, here's the three schools. Here's what everybody wanted. The next thing we did was we looked at, based off of Cropper, who did, we, we projected out for the next 10 years. We factored into account developments that we know have been approved, developments that are in the process for approval, and developments that may, that we know based on conversations with town officials and, and people in the market, that there's conversations on large tracts of land, some over 100 acres, to do developments. And families are entertaining those, those conversations as we speak. So, with that, we said, all right, what are we looking at over the next 10? Cause the worst thing to do would be put a plan together, do the addition, and then come to y'all in three years and say, well, I'm sorry, I need to put two portables. I mean, you'd say, Tommy, why are we paying you what we pay you? I mean, that, that's what you would say.
Say, we're not paying you that anymore.
Understood. Um.
You ain't gotta smile up there over there. I agree.
But it is. I, and, and I agree, too. Um, so with that, we looked at where we were. We knew where we were budgetarily, okay? And so, we started making tweaks. And as a result, this is what came up. On CES, we, we've got, right now, it's CES, 21 classrooms, 21 core classrooms. We are proposing to add a net five to reach 26, which will provide CES with an additional capacity of 100 students. Okay? So, they'll have the room, not just for growth that could take place, but also if their demographics change and the educational needs change, you have space in the building to address those challenges. The timeline we've got on CES is we're right now, uh, this month, our goal is to firm up our budget, we hope. Uh, begin the site work and construction on the new built, new additions, uh, June of 2020. So, that's not far away. As soon as we get the approval from the town on site work, we'll do the site work. But our site work of both CES and CPS isn't a whole lot time-wise. Um, we will, once June comes, the two portables, the arc portable and the special ed portable that's on the playground side of, of the building. Um, the special ed portable will be moved down in about 32 feet and over, away from a tree that's there. It allows us to connect the existing power lines. It's an easy connection. The R trailer will move to where the other three are. Um, and then, uh, we'll rock and roll from there for the FY 21 school year. July of 2020, we'll begin construction on the new additions and it will go. Uh, we have a 12-month timeframe to get it completed and we're all very comfortable that that can be done. Uh, one thing to keep in mind, we will work with the schools to ensure we're not interrupting state testing. Um, we're aware of that. Uh, we've done that, like, for example, with roofs, where we were in the middle of a roof project, state testing comes. We either did it at night or we did it on weekends. So, there's ways for us to accommodate that. We've advised branch and the team, um, that, of what the, when the windows are. And, uh, so that's been built into our plan. Um, we'll complete the move of the two portables by July. June of 2021, we'll begin work on what I call the outer loop, which is a, a drop-off related loop we're doing, uh, there. Uh, we'll also begin all of our work on our interior renovations. July of 2021, we've completed the new additions and we're moving. Um, and then, August of 21, before the first day of school, we'll complete the outer loop. Once, you will see on CES, because the renovations are pretty straightforward, we'll be finished all of our work December of 2021. Okay? Um, and, and let me say, before I get too far, the three principals and their teams have been fantastic to work with. Okay? Okay? They, they've listened, we've listened to what they've said, we've listened, you know, they've listened to us, and it really is a good team between the two groups and, and Dr. Meyer, because he's, he's always great for us to work with. But the, the schools have been fantastic, and they need to be commended.
And they're here, and they're here tonight, too, the principals.
Can I ask you a question real quick before we go to the next school?
Yes, ma'am.
The wiring that's in CES that's overhead in the, in the white.
We intend to address that as much as we can.
That's gonna get rid of, right?
As much as we can.
All of it, right?
As much as we can.
You said all of it, right?
I have a $35 million of cash.
Well, you're gonna do it. I know you can.
We will do as much, yes.
I, I think we, do we talk about putting, dropping?
Yeah, it's bad. It looks like a track track. I mean, it's terrible.
We intend, we intend to get it done. However, I do reserve, I gotta stay within the budget.
You're the man. I got you.
Yes, ma'am.
Pressure's on.
Pressure is on.
I'm gonna be putting that roof up is what I'm gonna be doing. Y'all are the hardest people to tell no to.
Okay, let's go on to the next. Yeah.
This is after I got accused of looking like Danny. Yeah, wasn't that?
Just the.
CPS, what we have there is CPS today has 25 classrooms. We're adding five to get to 30 classrooms, and that includes, and our, not including the 30 is the STEM, so that every one of our schools, one of the things Dr. Meyer has stressed to us, the importance that as we go new, that every school has a STEM, has art, has music, which all of these schools have. That will add a capacity of 90 students, because that's an 18 to 1 ratio we use on K through 3, and since it's only K2, pre-K2, we used 18 to 1. Our timeline there, and it's a, we have much more work there, so you're gonna see it goes out a little bit longer. March of 2020, the same thing with the budget. June of '21, we begin work, subject to the approval from the town. We have three portables there that we have to destroy. We cannot retain them, save them, there's zero value to them.
Have a ceremony. What about the other 10?
Huh?
Fire, burning.
We'll coordinate that with the fire department. July 2020, we'll begin construction on their new additions, and you see on your additions, on the site, on the slide we gave y'all, the yellow is your new addition section. You'll also note on there how we're taking in the office area, the ceiling to the building, there's an overhang, so we've already got the ceiling in place. We're just enclosing to get additional advantage and open up the office space to a little bit more efficient use. We'll complete the move of the three portables in July. We'll begin work on, in June, on Phase 1 of the parent drop-off and pickup. Remember, we're coming on the CES side with the road, with a loop up at the top, come back down, and then we'll have a new parking where the bus loop currently is.
Could you go back to that slide and take your finger and just show me what the new car rider loop is gonna look like? Is that impossible?
So, if you, if I'm, where I'm at, on the right-hand side of the school, we have a road that goes up, will go past the building slightly, there'll be a loop that comes back around, it'll come down on the other, on this side of the building, there'll be a service entrance off of where the white's at, because that's where the existing cafeteria and, and service areas are. It'll come down to where the gymnasium is there on the bottom.
Right.
And then there'll be a road, and you see the overhang in front of the building, you see the dotted line coming off the yellow, that's an overhang, and we've extended that to match where the bus loop is. So, where the gym is now, that is a bus loop.
Okay.
Okay? That bus loop is gonna go away in two phases, okay? And that's gonna become a large parking lot, and then the parent loop where they'll drop off, where the overhang area is at, and they'll pick up at the overhang area.
Okay.
Then where the existing parking is to the left of the bus loop today, that's gonna become a bus loop, okay? And it allowed us to take the parking, which is about 50 spaces today, to go to 120. That may lower a little bit as we tweak where, where curb cuts are and so forth, but it'll still be in excess of 100, and it allowed us, on the other side, to reduce some concrete, which allowed us to save a few dollars. Okay?
You know, we've, we've seen some prelim layouts of the outside areas.
Yeah, I'll be glad to share them. We just got them late this afternoon. I can send it in email to y'all. I can send it via email.
Yeah, you better see a lot better than those other plans with that outside.
And I apologize. We just, we used old ones, and I didn't want to show old ones in here with the new plans.
It's fine, it's fine, just as our environment, and we just realized that's, that's a big problem. We just really need to make sure that's a, a big thing.
And we've made space for another pre-K?
We've added a five total. I mean, our, our problem is, and the numbers are still very fluid, so I'm not gonna tell you where I think we're at. I'll tell you where we started. So, what we started with, remember, we had $35 million. We started at 42.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have $70 million, so I'll close the hole. So, it's matching and working it, and we'll get to, what, what we're proposing, JD and I both believe we can accomplish.
Okay.
We wouldn't have shown it to you if we didn't think we can do this. Okay? We still got work to do, but we think it's very, very doable, or we wouldn't, we wouldn't have presented it to Dr. Meyer, because he's gonna hold me to what I got on this slide, and we wouldn't have presented it to you as a school board. We talked about our timelines. We'll begin our interior work June of 2021. July, we've completed the additions, and we'll move classes into the additions. We're keeping during construction, you know, where, so if I'm facing the front of the building here, in front of me, I've got two portables in the very back toward the middle, those two portables will stay in place during construction. We won't take those out until, until once we've completed work. We'll complete the Phase 1. We'll begin, we'll complete the renovation May of 2022. It'll take longer, because we've got students, we have to work around everything.
Right.
Okay?
Open school.
June of '22, we commence work on Phase 2 and 3 of the parent drop-off and pickup parking areas. We complete that in August of '22, and now CPS is complete. Here is BES, and BES has, when you look at developments, CES and CPS don't have a whole lot of developments currently planned in that, in those two zones, districts. BES does. There's one development that's been approved right in front of the Adams. It's a retail with 100 residential units above it, just similar to what you see in the Atlanta market. There's another development going right down the street from that that's very similar to retail with 100 units. And then there's a large parcel greater than 100 acres across the street that that family has had numerous conversations with developers on, on developing that property. The, the push you hear is affordability, 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 and, and obviously going down price, Pepper's Ferry is, is probably a little bit more affordable than going down prices for it. So, when we looked at that and we saw where the growth was, we, we went from initially, we were gonna do, as you can see, to the left of the gym there, we were gonna build an entryway that's secure. Right now, you go through the front door, you can roam the school. One of the things we're doing that Dr. Meyer has focused on is bringing all our elementary schools, creating that vestibule area, so we have a secure entryway for all of our schools. So, we did, when we did that, they made us move the clinic across the hallway, when we, and you see the blue across that hallway. When we did that, that was a classroom we had to move. Then, when we changed the office area, there was a classroom toward the end down here that we had to move. So, when we had our classrooms, we had to replace those. So, you see on here nine classrooms. Well, two was two. So, there's seven new classrooms. That's 140 additional student capacity at that school, which we think is definitely will be needed in the, in the near future, because construction is, you know, not only do you have, the development's been approved, but where Stetson has, the Adams, you've got the condos that are going up, those are about 50% complete, you have residential homes behind that, those are all happening. It's not will, it is. And then you're gonna have the growth that's gonna begin taking off toward Bellevue. The thing that we have to do now is when we added the additional seats, VDOT wants us to add a turning lane, a right turning lane and a left turning lane off of, off of the highway there. So, we're working with our, our engineering team, coming up with, with better, we have to revise our numbers. Also, since we extended the layout of the building, the site work we've done is, is doable, but we gotta extend that, so we're redoing our site work. We're working with VDOT, our engineers are, on what that's gonna be. We think we can have all that done and submitted to the county on or before June of 2020, and we'll work as fast as we can. If we could submit it tomorrow, we would, but I mean, we, we've kinda given us a little We begin our site work in August of 2020, and that one, we'll have more site work, okay? And again, if it gets approved, July 1st, we'll start July 1st. It's just, we gave ourselves some timeframe to get the approvals. The county, by the way, is easy for us to work with. They're very good, and VDOT's also very good. We just gotta follow, you know, dot our i's, cross our t's.
So, do, we don't have to pay for the turning lane, do we?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
Yeah, we will.
Is there any grants or anything we can get for that?
Generally, on VDOT, they're all, they're non-reversible grants. So, you know, we've got, we've heard budgeted numbers from a quarter of a million dollars to as high as a million dollars. So, pick anything in between.
But I do right think, right there, it's.
Great idea.
It's a great idea.
Oh, totally great. Totally great.
I mean, almost whatever it cost. I mean, it's not whatever.
I think regardless, if we, if we were not even adding capacity, I, I think it's important to change that.
That's just a bad area.
Yeah, I totally agree. I was just asking.
It costs a lot of money.
Yeah, it'd be worth it.
One thing I forgot.
I just wish they would pay for it, yeah.
I'm sorry. Excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt. One thing, one thing we're gonna do is when, where the parking lot comes off the left-hand side of the building, we're gonna carry it around to the gym, so that'll be a drop-off and a pick-off point, and then loop back to our main road.
This is the main road, right?
Okay? So, where we end today, we'll extend it to the gym and loop it back. We think by December of 2021, we'll have completed the work on the renovations part of it. By September of 2021, we think we will have completed the work on the new additions. We've projected starting those in October of 2020. So, it's 11 months, and we think that's very doable. So, what we have next, we continue our discussions with our principals, make sure that the plans we have fit within their expectations, their goals, the school's goals, and within the budget that we have. We continue to work on the, the plans, both from a site work and a construction, so that we can commence work as soon as possible. Continue to work with branch build, Five Design, Gay and Neal, and our other members of our team to just make sure that, at the end of the day, we have a guaranteed maximum price that everyone knows this is what we're gonna spend, and it's one that we definitely is achievable. What we can't do is, is, we can't have change orders. I mean, we'll have a contingency to take care of some, but we need to fit with inside the guidelines that we've got here, because there's other projects, obviously CHS, to, that need to be begun, and so, you know, we need to do that. Any questions?
It's very exciting.
Yes.
All I can say.
Yeah, now, I, I did have a question about the entrances, but you answered it already.
Did I?
Yes.
Okay. Would redoing on CPS, so you would get a little bit easier in, you know, security area and then.
Right.
Trying to get, you know, the CPS CES, trying to get everyone off the road.
Yes.
Is, is, is a huge priority there, and I think we've found a couple ways we can do that. Maybe even having two drop-off lines at CES according to grade.
Right. We can add in our environmental.
Right.
It's what we could do.
Right.
Now, and the other thing at CES will be, depending on what VDOT does on the grant we have proposed, we may be coming back to have discussions about Betty Drive. That grant, though, is a non-reversible grant, so we have to have the money upfront. So, VDOT may provide some money, and then, you know, it'd be intended as a, as a revenue sharing of some time between us and the town of Christiansburg. Once we get that, which should be May-Junish, then we'll be in a position to work with the superintendent and, and work with the town and see what, what, what sharing they may be, and then determine if we can afford to do it. But obviously, the desire would be to do it if we can afford it.
Sure.
More questions on this, these three projects, though? Because I want, Mr. Krantz, a quick update on how soon we'll be looking for an architect for?
June, we want the architect to be on board.
Christiansburg High School?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna be looking for architects, like an architect for Christiansburg High School, and sending out the proposals?
Yes, sir.
When will that, when will that be sent out?
In the next week.
Okay.
They hit the straight, we're gonna give them 60 days, so we ensure we give everybody ample opportunity.
And, you know, so it'll be chosen in June, and then it will probably take a year and a half to just go through the community process.
Yes, sir.
Get a community input, teacher input.
Yes, sir.
That's a huge project.
That's gonna be a huge project.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And hopefully, of course, the, the thought is, when we're done with this, we can move right into breaking ground for Christiansburg High School.
And let me say, and I'm not, I gotta, gotta give everybody kudos, but I do want to. JD, he has done a tremendous job with this project, working with us, and has been a pleasure to work with him, and look forward to working on more. But he's, his, his work at OWPR, his history, his expertise, it's, it's, he adds a lot to the project, and it's, it's, I think we've made a good team, and, and he works well with the whole facilities team, so.
You think you wanna add JD?
Uh, no, thank you.
He's been a great addition to our learning environment.
Yeah, we talked about adding the value, but I think it's also, they were also bringing everything in and out, how with mobile units, the art, that, reading, everything that's out there now, space will be created within the building to house it.
Can you say your comment again, Jamie?
He's been a great addition to our learning environment action teams as well, so.
Yes, he has.
Good. Any other questions?
Mr. Chovak, any questions?
No, thanks, I'm good.
Okay, good. I wasn't sure if you're still there.
Wake up more.
Do you have a question?
No, I said wake up more.
Thank you, Mr. Krantz.
Thanks.
Okay, I gotta get back where I was. Next item is our unfinished business. Any matters of unfinished business for members?
I have something, but I don't know if it's considered unfinished or new business. And it's just something I would like us to maybe, tonight, obviously, not discuss, because it's very, very late. But since somebody came this evening and mentioned it, and we've gotten a few letters on it, is the PE Fine Arts question. And I guess what I've gathered is kind of the communication of it, and you and I have talked about it, Dr. Meyer, and I, I, there seems to be, there's been several people who have mentioned to me outside of just the emails that we've gotten, their concern about what's perceived as being a cutback in fine arts and physical education. So, maybe that's something we get to talk, talk about next meeting? Well, next meeting's the budget meeting.
Yeah, how about March 31st, I'll, we'll, I'll get our folks to.
Not tonight.
Yeah, give an overview of, of what that looks like, the why.
Why it is done.
Why it's done, how it was done.
What a difference it'll make.
Well.
And we really didn't cut anything.
That's right.
I understand. I, I, well, I don't understand, actually, but I, I think that it's perceived, that it, that's the perception, and I think it's some, some of it's the communication of it, or maybe just how it was rolled out, whereas there's the sense that there wasn't really teacher involvement.
There wasn't much teacher involvement, and there's a reason for that. Okay?
Okay.
That, that we'll explain. There was a timing issue because of the new schedules and, and understanding the budget and how fast we could actually get to the additional planning time for our regular classroom teachers, and. And so that's one of the things that, you know, we'll explain why at the next meeting here, okay? Yep.
Any others?
No, so I had the, I was gonna bring up the same issue, so we'll get it on another agenda.
Yep.
But I had real concerns many years ago, when we just screwed around with the middle school schedule, and PE was basically eliminated, and other electives. So I am concerned, and I absolutely knew Mrs. Miller was gonna show up, right? To make sure that we're not hurting those programs, especially PE, that's a key one.
That's my belief, that we're not, you know, hurting the programs, obviously, because I wouldn't have done it if I'd have believed we were. And so, I'll explain to you why, and also, you know, just a reminder, too, I mean, we've added recess, you know, in my mindset, I was the one that actually pushed out the two times-day recess, doubled the recess during the school day. And, I mean, movement's very important. You know, the arts, you know, I'm gonna tell you, we're adding, we're adding a music, at the middle schools this year, we're adding music, band, theater at every school.
And PE?
We spent over a million dollars adding PE. So, but I'll explain it next time, but, yeah, it's, you know, it's, you know, obviously, there's some specialty teachers not happy with it. However, the 400 teachers who are general classroom teachers, I've talked to a lot of them that are very happy with it, because of what it's gonna give them, and how it's gonna help kids there, too. But, no, I value movement, I value the arts, and we'll explain how that looks at the next meeting.
March 31st.
The March 31st meeting.
Yeah. Next joint meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any others unfinished business? Moving to new business, any matters of new business board members? Then moving on, announcements and information, any announcements, information? Think of any events? Then upcoming school board meetings. You see that March 17 is our joint meeting with Board of Supervisors, and it's gonna be at the Operations Center.
Is that the same time as we usually meet?
Mm-hmm, I believe yes, 7 o'clock for
Or is that one early?
Joint meeting.
Is it, it's not early? We eat early, so we have
We eat early.
6 o'clock.
6, 6:30.
6:30.
So that's I'll double check and I'll email you, but I believe we're gonna eat at 6:30, the tour of the Operations Center at 7:00, and then 7:30 for the regular meeting. But I'll email and confirm that to you, because I'm running on memory.
Sounds good. Thank you. It's the 17th, right? Yeah. Thank you. And the next one will be the March 31st, you realize that we have three meetings this month, and not the first April meeting.
And only one in April.
Yeah. And if nothing else, we're ready to enter the closed session. Our next order of business is closed session, may have motion to go into closed session to discuss one personnel matter and six student matters as authorized by Section 2.2-3711 of Code of Virginia.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Now we're in a closed session.